This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located in east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device during for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by Asbury Park APTV. Please join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the motion by Juan Clayton, a second by Rick Lamber, and Barbara Chrisa.
All right, our first item up for discussion is the minutes of April 4th, 2022. If anyone doesn't have any concerns, can I get a motion to pass the minutes?
Move to a group.
I have the motion by Juan Clayton, a second by Rick Lamber. Everyone here is eligible to vote except Janet Sannomeo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, minutes on April 4th, 2022.
Okay, we have our first application up for discussion on Memorial Avenue Holdings.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman, Madam Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney with an office in Red Bank, and I'm very pleased to be before you tonight on behalf of Memorial Avenue Holdings. By way of very, very brief introduction, the property which is a subject to this application is identified as 900-904 Springwood Avenue in Asbury Park, and there's also a portion which is located in Neptune. The existing property contains various unoccupied buildings and unutilized asphalt lots. The city is in the Springwood Avenue Gateway Zone and is subject to the Springwood Avenue Redevelopment Plan. We are respectfully coming before you tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and variance and exception waiver approval for the demolition of the existing structures on the site and the construction of a four-story mixed-use building. That four-story mixed-use building will contain 92 residential dwelling units and approximately 11,873 square feet of retail/commercial space. Madam Chair, I am excited to be here tonight, and what we hope to convince and prove to you is that this is a project worthy of approval, and underlying our belief that it is worthy of approval is that we find that the project is going to be overwhelmingly consistent with the goals and objectives of the Springwood Avenue Redevelopment Plan. We will hear about that from our planner, but just in general, the Springwood Avenue Redevelopment Plan talks about connecting Springwood Avenue and other parts of the city by improving vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation along Springwood Avenue and by providing a mix of land uses which will attract visitors to the neighborhood. There's also another goal of that redevelopment plan which talks about ensuring high-level architectural integrity, which provides for the quote "people-centered" or a people-centered environment, and we think that we're achieving that. And there's also a third goal and objective which talks about promoting business development through the introduction of a variety of business types along Springwood Avenue with easy access to multiple modes of transportation. We feel and respectfully hope that you feel that after listening to our presentation that our proposal will satisfy and advance those objectives. Madam Chair, just for record-keeping purposes, before me, I have tonight with me Jake Modesto to testify, he's our engineer, Anthony Vandermark, our architect, Andrew Valari, traffic engineer, and TJ Reecey, our planner. Madam Chair, I'll bring up our engineer Jake Modesto if it's acceptable to you all.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, for the record, I have reviewed the notices and we do have jurisdiction to hear the matter tonight as well.
Great. Can you please swear in both our professionals and our witness?
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Doug Clowland, inside engineering, board engineer.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Caden Hanks, board planner.
Jake Modesto, Stonefield Engineering, I'm the applicant's engineer.
And if you could spell your name as well?
Yep, last name is M-O-D-E-S-T-O-W.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Modesto, if you could just briefly provide the Board with a list of your credentials and certifications and confirm that all your licenses and certifications are current and up to date.
Of course. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I do have multiple other engineering licenses throughout the Northeast and Midwest. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology with a Bachelor's of Engineering. I've worked on over 100 land development applications, many being similar scope and nature to the project in front of you tonight, and have been qualified as an expert witness before in front of other land use boards.
Madam Chair, I'd respectfully ask that the Board accept the witness as a qualified professional witness.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Modesto, just for the record, you're familiar with the application, correct?
Yes.
And your office prepared the plans?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the site?
Yes.
All right, why don't we just dispense formalities and why don't we, if you could talk about the engineering aspects associated with this proposal?
Yeah, sure. Property once again is located at 900 Springwood Avenue, block 705, lots 1 through 4. I do want to point to the Board the aerial exhibit prepared for my office, shown here, dated 4/13/2022, simply showing the property outlined in red. The top of the page is north. I just want to orientate the Board with the property. The property is located directly south of NJ Transit. The property located at the top of the page. The NJ rail is located directly to the east, to the north side of the property, we have Springwood Avenue, and Memorial Drive is located to the west. So we're more or less surrounded by right-of-ways in some sort of nature. To the south of us is the municipal line. Part of the application is within the township of Neptune, so you can see the municipal line located south, the dash solid line between the city and the township of Neptune. Property is just over an acre, it's 1.14 acres, and is located within the Springwood Avenue Redevelopment District. In particular, it's in the Springwood Avenue Gateway Zone. Properties to the north and east, sorry, to the north and west are all located within that same redevelopment district. On the other side of the railroad tracks is the Main Street Redevelopment, so surrounded by redevelopment districts, and to the south of us is the township of Neptune. Currently on-site are three one-story buildings, generally about 10,000 square feet in size. The site has broken up asphalt, it's vacant, all the buildings are vacant. There are several curb cuts along Memorial Drive, Anspurwood Avenue, one directly called the northeast corner and one to the southwest corner on Memorial Drive. Memorial Drive is a county road. Before we started the application, we did each and reach out to several jurisdictions, including NJ DOT Rail, which has jurisdiction over the NJ railroad directly to the east of the property, and Monmouth County for the right-of-way. In our initial findings, we did come across a couple other encumbrances that initially were identified when we were looking at the property. In particular, had to do with Memorial Drive, where there was a portion of the site, you can actually see, as we go to the survey component, there is almost a jigsaw configuration along Memorial Drive. We'll see that in the site plan in a little bit, but it's not a consistent right-of-or-frontage across Memorial Drive like a consistent lot as shown here. And then the south of the property is a large regional drain that traverses, almost meanders across municipal lines, which further restricts the property. About 13% of the area is located within these two areas I'm talking about, the dedications or restricted areas. What the applicant is looking to do is to raise everything on-site, proposing new four-story mixed-use development, and all I'm looking at is the colorized rendering which takes into consideration the site plan submitted by my office and the landscaping plan prepared by my office. This is dated 4/13/2022.
I'm sorry, have these, do we have these renderings that we're looking at? And if we do, which?
Yeah, I can mark them.
Yeah, well, which ones would we be looking at?
They were not included in the package.
So these were not included in the package, these last two?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, so, I mean, are they marked?
They are not. So we're going to mark the aerial exhibit as exhibit A1, the aerial map, I think, and colorized rendering and exhibit A2.
Sorry about that. So A2, just for the Board's orientation, north is now on the right side of the page. I'm just going to talk in page orientation from now on. So with Springwood being on the right, and then to the top of the page, Memorial Drive, you can see the jigsaw configuration I was talking about before, running across Memorial Drive, it actually juts in a little bit, about six feet comes across. So it's irregular when it comes to its shape across Memorial Drive. It's part of the application, what we will be doing is dedicating a small portion so there's a consistent right-of-way. On paper, no one can really see what this property line looks like, but now there'll be a consistent right-of-way that'll be dedicated to the county, so it'll be a consistent Memorial Drive right-of-way. For the structure, we'll have multiple uses. Really want to start maybe from the top down. There'll be an active roof space, we'll have patio area that our architect will get into in a little bit. We'll have a green roof configuration on the roof. Between levels 2 and 4, there'll be the 92 residential units on floor 2. They'll contain our common space for those apartments, and then have some additional commercial space, so we just over 7,200 and 2,000, sorry, 7,428 square feet of office or commercial, all facing Memorial Drive. And they'll be located in this general area here facing Memorial Drive. As we continue down onto the ground floor, there'll be three separate tenant areas that will consist of just over 4,705 square feet. This will be intended to be neighborhood commercial, there's no known tenants at this time, but the intent is to be neighborhood commercial or office. There'll be a trash room located facing Memorial Drive, and we'll have two access points to our first floor or ground floor parking areas. There'll be a full-movement driveway, a Memorial Drive, and then a right-in, right-out driveway on Springwood. Springwood being at the right side of the page, located on Memorial Drive. Within that first-floor parking area, there'll be 110 parking.
I'm sorry, I'm real sorry, Mr. Modesto.
Yeah.
So far, we've gone through all of this, and it's nothing that we have.
Okay.
So what should we, what can we reference? Which one of the renderings should we be referencing when you're talking about where the trash is, where the driveways are? What should we be looking at?
So you can also reference the non-colorized image of this on C3?
Which page?
C3.
C3?
Yes.
Okay, if you could go through that, that would be really helpful so we could follow along.
Yeah, of course.
Because right now, right now, we're not seeing it.
So C3, I can flip through that if you'd like, ma'am.
No, that's fine. If we could put it up here so we could see it, and you can point to it, and we can engage.
Just walk down through about that. You just hit top floor, first floor, second floor.
I don't see the trash.
Thank you.
Okay, so now up on the screen is sheet C3, and just for the Board's understanding, I was just giving very broad strokes to the interior workings of the building itself. Mr. Vandermark, our architect, will dive into that a little bit further, the actual details, each floor's breakdown. So if there's any questions regarding that, he'll be able to answer it.
Okay.
So I just want to give the Board an understanding of the project as a whole.
Okay.
So on sheet C3 that's in front of you, the colorized rendering, so A2, all are more or less the exact same thing. I guess we need to backtrack to the access to the parking areas. There's a full-movement driveway located at the plan, top-left corner, that's a full-movement driveway on Memorial Drive. And then there's a right-in, right-out driveway on Springwood Ave. to the, we'll call it the east or the right side of the plan. This will feed our 110 parking space within this, we'll call it a centrally-located area within the building. There are portions of the property, portions of the parking area that do protrude out from the building. The building is shown on plan C3 as the gray hatch that is the building, taking the base of the second floor and up. The parking area is all covered by the building, except for a few areas. Here at the left side of the page, you can see that area doesn't have any dark hatching over it, and that is the location of that storm drain that we talked about earlier. So that area won't have a building. Net between the dedicated easement area and the storm line, it's about 13% of the site that we really could not place a building that the redevelopment plan did anticipate for on a property of this size. So within this parking area that has 110 parking spaces, 36 will be mechanical, that is centrally-located. It would be the second row from the bottom, so I'm just going to direct the Board to two cross axes on the page. It is located in the seventh stack, that is 36 mechanical parking spaces located there. Within the area, we'll comply with the regulations for EV charging stations, we'll have 15% of this development, which will be 17 EV charging stations that will be proposed as part of the development. We'll have 588 parking spaces, and 102 bike parking, 90 of which will be inside the building, 12 which will be accessible within the street right-of-way. We are requiring, we are net requirement with EV charging stations because we are allowed a 10% reduction in required parking, is 99 parking spaces required for this development. There is a component within the redevelopment plan that talks about the required parking spaces for non-residential uses. In particular, it basically allows for us to account for shared parking. In this case, there's 24 required at a 1 to 500 square foot ratio, so 24 parking spaces will be shared within the parking area. Those 24 parking spaces will be, would be the closest to the railroad right-of-way to the page bottom. Now, with this, on the bottom of the page, as you're looking at it, where it'd be the east side of the property, we'll have a six-foot-high CMU block wall. On the inside of that, facing towards the building, there will be associated landscaping facing in with the rest of the parking spaces. From an NJ DEP standpoint, we already considered a major development for stormwater. We will comply with all those regulations when it comes to groundwater recharge, water quality, and water quantity. And we'll do that three ways, with three BNP's I should say. There'll be extensive green roof located, as I talked about, on that roof, just over 4,780 square feet of extensive green roof. There'll be porous pavement or porous surface tip which right into the ground. There'll just be over 5,000 square feet, again, located at the bottom of the page. There'll be those 34 parking spaces directly at the bottom of our pages look. And then underground, continuing as we go down, there'll be a subsurface infiltration basin, it'll comprise of 44 chambers, giving us a little over 3,800 cubic feet of volume to store. This will provide us our water quantity and water quality reductions for the property. So we're required to reduce it for the two, 10, and 100-year storm events by 50, 25, and 20% respectfully. From a utility standpoint, you can follow along to, I think it's sheet C6 of the submitted plans, all of our utilities, including electric, telephone, gas, water, and fire, will be located on Memorial Drive, feeding their associated mechanical rooms. The stormwater, sorry, the sanitary connection will be on Springwood Ave., and the stormwater will connect to that regional pipe located on the south side of the property. We have obtained will-serv letters for the, from the utility providers for our services. I want to bring it back down to the street level, going back to sheet C3, or the landscaping plan, wherever the Board prefers, essentially showing the same thing. C8 is the landscaping plan that has the 15 trees along Memorial Drive and Springwood Ave. These will be clustered in small groups of honey locusts and red maples. There's 11 along Memorial Drive evenly spaced, and then four along Springwood Ave. There's 108 inkberries located along the CMU block wall on the south, or page bottom, and then 62 ink haulies within the roadway. There's some small planter beds along with the bike parking in the street, the street frontage, will be after the dedication. There are several design waivers and variances that we are requesting as part of the application. Because the dedication has not gone into place, we are requesting a front yard setback. 15, a maximum 15 is required currently. From that jigsaw configuration, we're requiring 16.2 after dedication. That variance would more or less be eliminated, but the dedication has not gone through as part of the application. We are requesting a rear yard setback variance located on the south side of the property or page left, if you're still looking at page C3. And it's really the configuration, there's a small bump out of the building, located closest to Memorial Drive. It's about a 1.6 difference between what is proposed and then what is required. There's also a requirement for a parking space design waiver for the size of the parking spaces, 8.5 is being proposed where 9 by 18 is required. The length of the parking stall more or less complies however the width, which is common to a lot of residential developments, is a design waiver. Mr. Vandermark will go into a little bit more about the parking lot, the maximum illumination design expect, design relief we're requesting, and the compact car parking space we are. We also are requesting a de minimis exception for the number of parking spaces from RSIS. 181 parking spaces will be required because of RSIS. However, the redevelopment code or redevelopment plan does look for a smaller number of parking spaces than RSIS, so there's, practical standpoint, there's no way we could comply with that component. We're also requesting a deviation from the height of the loading area, with it being underneath the loading area designated just for the parking spaces, sorry, the uses and operations of our proposed development. That's where it's located, generally, we'll call it the upper, the right side of the plan inside of the building itself, so there's going to be no on-street loading, and the number of loading spaces is also requested. In this scenario, the applicant is looking to basically utilize both the residential and the non-residential loading zones as one. It's kind of an adaptive use of a space when it comes to the proposed uses. We did receive the review letters from the Board Engineer and the Board Planner. I think I've gotten most of the things they requested as far as testimony, but I can answer any questions that they may have or provide anything more.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Do you want me to go through the Board Engineer's review letter?
That would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Jake, do you have the review letter?
I do, yes.
The most recent one, I believe, was April 14th?
Correct. I'm going to pull it up, work the Board's following along. I think mostly the testimony items, or if we want to go to, go letter by letter?
Yeah, I think they want to go through it.
Item 1 is talking about a topographic and utility survey we provided as final approval. I think we can agree to that.
And just to tell what page you're on for the?
I'm on page, I believe it's page 3.
Page 3.
It's item number 2, location of individual trees and groups of trees within 200 feet. I think we're requesting a waiver from that, if I remember correctly. There are no, there's four or five trees on-site. We've shown them generally with our existing demolition plan. You can pull up the demolition if needed. I think there's a right-of-way within 200 feet. We generally show that on our existing, sorry, our cover page, sheet C1 of the site plans, a number 4 for existing manhole sewer lines. Supplementary survey was submitted, showing all the requested information. Existing and proposed easements were also, it's number 5, we're also showing.
So I'm sorry, number 4 was, you received number 4, Doug?
Yeah, if we could go back to that for a second, I don't know if we did. But the survey that was submitted, does that document the easements and restricted areas that you spoke of before?
So the, I have to go back, I don't have that survey in front of me. I know we show it in our demolition plan.
Okay.
The right-of-way dedication hasn't taken place, that wouldn't be shown.
Yeah, I think the survey that we had, it was just a boundary survey, and I guess there's probably a topographic survey floating around somewhere. We just wanted a copy of it.
Okay.
All right, so can we go back to number, which ones do you have and which ones do you not have? Because I want to make sure that you both are in sync here.
That is number 1, the survey comment, and then also number 5, the existing proposed easements would be shown on said survey.
Okay, so you're going to be providing that, or you have provided that?
We will provide.
All right, so you will provide.
Yes.
Okay. So what about, what about 2, 3, and 4?
So yeah, just to clarify, 2, 3, I'm sorry. Number 2 and 4, we're basically stating that we don't have, we don't take any issue with the Board granting a temporary waiver for the purpose of completeness. Number 3 asked for some information to be added to the plan, which he agreed to comply with.
Okay, so you will comply with number 3?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think 5, you indicated that you will, your office will provide the information?
The applicant, our office did not prepare the survey, but the applicant will.
We'll submit that.
Okay.
It also covers 4 as well.
And number 6?
Regarding sidewalk dimensions should be added to the plans. Those have been provided on sheet C3. So we've complied with that.
What sheet is that on?
Sheet C3, that's the site plan. I think number 7, as it indicates, the trash room, we have identified that within the architectural plans. I don't think those have been presented in front of the board. The general space has also been on, shown on the site plan. I don't think it's been labeled on the actual site plan, but it is included as part of the architecturals.
All right, so you have that. Are you okay with that, Doug? You have it?
Any issue, just labeling it on your plan?
No, no issues. I think number 8 has to do with the roof plans. Once again, if needed, we can label it on our plans, but I think that's more suited for the architect.
Yeah, I think that'll probably be addressed later.
Sorry? If it's going to be addressed later, I'm okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Site plans indicating roof drains, we'll agree to comply.
And I just wanted to confirm, it says testimony should be provided to demonstrate that all roof runoff will be conveyed to the underground drainage system? Like, there's no discharge at grade? It all goes...
No, it'll, it'll be conveyed once again through the extensive roof and then down into the infiltration basin.
Okay.
That was number 9, right?
Yes.
Soil testing will comply with all necessary soil testing through the new requirements by NJDEP. So we'll comply there. Description of proposed projects, I believe that, I don't think I'd include that in my plans, but we generally provide testimony regarding that. Comply.
Okay.
And then a color rendering, A2, and then the architect's associating presentation will be coming as well. Comply there.
So the color rendering is that?
This was, this is one part. This is the civil component rendering. The architect will have a separate rendering for the elevations.
So we have not seen that either?
Correct, correct. Broad stroking the building in general. Architect will bring out some of the details, I think, of the actual...
I understand, but, but going forward, Mr. Kennedy, and your future clients, please, can we have the documents so that, so that we can follow along?
Understood.
So getting them at the night of the, night of the presentation puts us in an awkward position.
Understood.
Because you see it, we do not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, want to continue with the review letter?
Yeah. We're talking right now, this is 1300 zoning review, which talks about the residential shared use situation and the appropriated signage associated with reserving those parking spaces. I think our client agreed to comply there, right?
Yeah, and are you going to talk about parking, or we're going to have our traffic engineer?
Andrew, we're talking to traffic as well.
So Madam Chair, if we could put that on hold, we have a traffic engineer to address parking, shared parking, and the, the exceptions we need or asking for.
I think the item 14 as well, I did judge upon in my testimony regarding RSIS and parking requirements.
But are we going to, we're going to talk about number 14 with the traffic person also? Because it says here about there are no van accessible. Will, will that testimony come then?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will comply with van accessible. That's part of the ADA requirements, I'd say. And then number 15, it comes to the number of bikes, bike parking spaces. I did touch on that. So we are exceeding the number.
And why don't you just, for the record, point out where the bicycle spaces are?
Yeah, if you can go to sheet C3, if you're following along, the submitted package. They're located in several areas across the building. Those areas located on Memorial Drive. If you're looking at the 4 EV charging stations, generally situated between the proposed commercial retail space. Do you mind flipping to C3? It's generally located, their bike parking spaces located here. Again, this corresponds almost directly with sheet C3, it just colorized. There's parking spaces located more along Memorial Drive. Bike parking spaces located in the bottom left-hand side of the page. And then located various other locations, including between the parking space and the ADA, sorry, the loading space and the ADA.
Sorry, what's, what's the date on those plans that you're presenting? The last revised date?
We, we, we see the ones that are March 4, '22. That's what the board has.
This is the board plans review memo. Done the same one?
I have a full-size set as well, if you personally want me to bring that on.
No, this is, this is fine. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Somebody was asking that. We have the ones from March 4.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
And just to go back to the van accessible space, the standalone ADA stall that has the one circle on it? Any issue delineating the access aisle for that as a separate entity from the loading zone?
I don't think so.
I think we're up to point 16.
Yep. Regarding the building height, so it says 16 and 17. We have to do regarding the building height and mechanical screening. I would defer to the architect on that one. I'm sure you'll hear a presentation on that.
Oh, sorry. Exterior mechanical, I know you touched on it before in terms of the locations of not, you know, not only rooftop equipment, but gas metering, electric metering. Any ideas where that's going to all occur? I think you, you touched on it in your testimony, but...
There's mechanical rooms that are facing Memorial Drive. I don't want to take too much from Mr. Vandermark's testimony, but he'll be providing a little more detail on the exact locations and the meter banks associated with that, along with the rooftop equipment.
Okay.
So I think we're on to development review, item 18, regarding means and methods of disposal of waste. We will be using a private hauler in this location and therefore being able to dictate when pickups are to accommodate the proposed space, proposed, or the actual demand of the building itself. And that is one of the design waivers we are requesting. Item 19 regarding the signage is the current intent of the applicant is to fully comply with that. 18 regarding the demonstrating aesthetically pleasing architectural, I would please defer to the board, the architect for that one. So that will, that will come up, along with the lighting for all of 21. Mr. Vandermark has put together a detailed lighting plan that'll address some of those comments. Item 22, when it comes to utilizing new utilities through the TWA process, I believe I touched on that in the testimony. We will require TWA approval and BWSE approval. Item 23, regarding the testimony provided, the effect of development is with respect to noise, air, and water quality. I believe I've touched on my part when it comes to the water quality component of that and the natural impact. I believe the rest of the professionals will also continue to touch on item 23 as we go along. A pavement repair detail, we'll agree to comply with that within the county right-of-way. A note being added, requesting any damaged or poor-conditioned concrete to be replaced, we'll agree to comply with that. Concrete detail and saw coating, we'll agree to comply with that. I don't see any issues. As far as the current status of the Freehold Soil Conservation District, we've actually required, obtained our certificate. We'll provide that to the board's engineer. Adequate storage for the residents, I will let Mr. Vandermark testify regarding that. And the amount of recyclables on the storage, again, private hauler, but Mr. Vandermark will also, you know, build on that. He's done many a project with the size and this kind of weighing in mind. Component 30, this has to do with the project's stormwater detention. We are within the PA1, so no groundwater recharge is required. We comply with that. The stormwater recharge, we will obviously comply with any need to remove any contaminants from the site to comply. I do not have the knowledge, and I also appear to talk on the Phase 1 dump for the property.
There was a Phase 1 completed, though?
There was, yes.
Okay.
To my knowledge, I haven't, I haven't seen it, but I know one was completed.
Okay. Any issue sending us a copy of that?
I will speak to the client's representatives and get that too, if it's in their possession.
For C, D, E, and F will agree to comply, I should say, E will agree to comply. Has to do with stormwater and the regulations that I already talked about regarding our devices used to manage stormwater, both in water quality and water quantity. We will direct for F, water rate from the CMU brick wall. That's part of our...
Well, we're on stormwater. Let me just ask a question. The state DEP just changed Wesley Lake from, not just recently, changed Wesley Lake from tidal to fluvial. Does this affect anything with this project? Because it's going to drain to Wesley Lake.
Yeah, so no effect of the property. You know, we do think this, it goes to a regional basin, sorry, regional storm line that runs through the south side of the property. To our knowledge, it's no impact to that condition or onto the property.
Where does it go?
It, it goes out to Wesley Lake.
All right, so it does go to Wesley?
Yeah. For all the maps that we were able to obtain between the township and the city.
Is there any DEP permitting required for the development?
We're not located within the CAFRA zone. We're just in the limits of it.
Okay.
The roadway, yeah, being the limits, but we just comply with the new stormwater regulations. We can comply with 30G, no issues of adding additional grading. Item H regarding the separation and soil testing, we will comply with that. I, we will comply with drawdown times, we already do comply. Provide calculations for J for capacity analysis for the storm pipes, we'll comply with that. Tie-in locations, capacity to handle the new flow, we will provide the analysis to the board's engineers' direction. We'll provide separation, we already do comply with that component. L, M, we'll provide a stormwater maintenance manual, and we will provide details incorporating that green roof and already have within our development.
And no issue filing the O and M manual with the deed for the property?
No, we would not have a problem with that.
And then for 32, regarding site triangles.
Wait a second, we're, 31.
Oh, sorry, 31. 31, sorry about that. This is the exception that we talked about when it comes to the parking spaces. There's a 24-foot drive aisle requirement. We're proposing 22, this is 21 to 22 for difference. That's located in a few pinch points throughout the building, generally located primarily, I should say, on the, the bottom of the page. It's the drive aisle that runs across that 34 parking spaces and runs north. And she wants to be in the columns, the structural columns for it. It's only a few locations. Generally everywhere else complies with that 24-foot drive aisle.
And Jake, why, why do we need the deviation?
We need to add, we have that for our structural components of the building itself.
And in your opinion, would there be any compromise to public health or safety?
Absolutely not.
Is that related to the mechanical stackers at all, or is that, is that just building columns?
I don't want to speak on the building columns. I'm not a structural, but I'm sure it has to do with, you know, the column spacing throughout the building. And I'm sure Mr. Vandermark will get into a little bit more of that. On to 32, regarding the site triangles, we will comply with that, ensuring those. The two loading spaces for 33, the vertical clearance as directed, we are requesting an exception from that.
And, and just why, why are we requiring that exception?
It's the location of the loading zone to ensure off-street parking and there's no conflicts with part with, sorry, off-street loading. Make sure that there's no vehicles being, loading on the streets as part of the application. And to ensure we're not creating a building height variance, we're tapped out at 45 feet, and Mr. Vandermark can talk about the floor-to-floor clearance.
Can you speak to the, the type of loading vehicles anticipated, or is that more for the traffic?
Our traffic engineer will talk about it, but generally we're expecting SU30s coming in and out of it at most. Mr. Vandermark will talk about the size of the units. We're expecting that to be your typical U-Haul vehicle. These are small retail users. We're not expecting very big, you know, WB50s, the larger tractor trailers we see. We're expecting smaller box trucks to be services, the Amazons of the world, to be coming in and out of this loading zone. And that's kind of the intent there. And then, that was 33, and then on to 34, considerations. We talked about CAFRA, we're under the CAFRA zone. 35, Monmouth Planning Board, we've submitted, have not received comments. Would have initial conversations with them. Lot consolidation.
We would have no problem with that. If the applications approve, we would consolidate the lots with a deed of consolidation to be reviewed and approved by the board attorney and board planner or engineer.
So the county submission hasn't happened yet, but you're working together with them? Is that how you determined the dedication was necessary?
A formal submission has been made. Initial conversations have been made prior to the actual submission, and that's how we know that the dedication would be required. I think 37, when it comes to electrical vehicle charging stations, I have testified on that. 17 will be proposed as part of the project scattered throughout the parking area. We will provide a truck training plan for maneuvers in and out of the loading zone for the associated vehicles needed for it. Should provide testimony on the warning system. I would defer to the traffic.
Okay. Any issue providing a...
Any issue providing a...
When you do the turning movement plans, there's a couple of spaces near the top-left corner of the screen, the compact stalls. Any issue including those in the analysis?
We would primarily focus in on that. My office has ran that. Those are compact parking spaces too, so those vehicles will be smaller in size. I think it's about 27 feet between the end of that parking space and the doorway, so there's space, but we will provide, you know, an exhibit for that. Pedestrian warning system as relates to vehicle traffic, the entrances, there will be pedestrian warning signals being used for vehicles entering exits. Those will be open during daylight hours and operations and necessary vehicle warning systems will be in place. I talked on number forty when it comes to the sewer line. The street opening permits, we will obtain all of those. TWA will be required, we will obtain that as well. And we have had recommendations and have comments from NJ DOT rail in the situation. Those conversations have been had and incorporated into this plan. That's forty-two. Forty-three. Do that one to you.
Madam Chair, this, the letter points out that the property is located, a portion of which is located in township of Neptune. We did, in fact, provide notice, obtained a list of the property owners who needed to be noticed, did serve them, and we also do have a letter from Neptune and did submit that indicating that Neptune is allowing Asbury Park to proceed with the matter. Neptune did not take a role in that.
Madam Chair, I can confirm with that as well.
Okay, good.
Number forty-four, when it comes to the monitoring wells on site, don't think I'm suited to provide testimony on that from an LSRP. Forty-five regarding availability for the utilities, there will be, we've obtained will-serv letters from all the necessary authorities, and they've agreed, or they will serve us. When it comes to the proposed ADA ramp locations, we have shown that on the plans and will comply with all ADA requirements within the right-of-way and provide any additional spot elevations. HVA system, equipment, smearing rooms for forty-seven, I will defer to the architect on that point. Property maintenance. Again, I don't think I'm suited to address that component.
We will have one of our witnesses, we prepare to address that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And then forty-nine requesting the traffic engineer's testimony, defer to the traffic Sewer connections, sewer connection phase, we'll agree to comply. Emergency vehicles, we will make sure that those are able to circulate the site. Owner's certificate, fifty-two, we'll provide that on the site plans. Number fifty-three regarding building and planters encroaching to the right-of-way, we'll obtain all necessary approvals for this, I'll leave that through the council. And fifty-four as it relates to the applicants and the construction official, we will work with the construction official when we get to that component of the development.
Hey Jake, I know you talked about briefly the green roof. Can you just focus on that again about the green roof and what makes it a green roof and what are some of the green-related features?
Yep, so on top of the building, where possible, we're installing these green roof trays. They allow us to basically provide water quality and slightly hold back the water to lower our time of concentration. They provide, they're part of the new NJDEP regulations for BMBs or GIs or green infrastructure as part of our three-step process to meet all those regulations through that, the porous pavement, which is also one of those green infrastructure components, and the infiltration basin.
And in terms of public transportation access, is that something that you're going to talk about, or we're going to have a traffic engineer?
I think Mr. Valari will take care of that.
Do you have anything else to add from a engineering standpoint?
No, I think we went pretty detailed through everything.
Madam Chair, no further questions direct for this witness at this time.
Does the planning board members have any questions for the witness? Anyone?
No.
Any? Go ahead.
No, parking is going to be handled by the traffic engineer.
By somebody else, yes.
I did have one question. Do you anticipate there's going to be any remediation needed on this lot for buried oil tanks or anything of that sort?
I don't know. I didn't review the Phase One in that manner, so I'm not quite sure.
So who would, who could answer that?
We will find out and get that back to you. And I think that was dovetails with one of the points in the insight review letter to get information about that, so we will get that information for you.
Anything from our professionals?
I just want to follow up on some of the parking issues.
Yeah.
I'm trying, I'm starting to lose it trying to put all the parking numbers together, so forgive me asked about this. I want to get things straight. Can you confirm how you generated your parking number? Because it's based on, let's start with the number of units and the number of bedrooms per unit. That's how you get to your parking number, right?
Correct.
So what are the numbers that you're using?
Those correspond with what you have. I want Mr. Vandermark to break that down a little bit further, the detailed breakdown of the bedrooms. I think it's more in his realm when it comes to it. We've worked hand-in-hand when it comes to the requirements, and we've both come to the same number, 110 being required.
So you don't know how many units are in here?
No, I do. I think there's a breakdown within the affordable housing.
There's C six that's over the chart.
Right. Those aren't my plans, so I don't want to test.
So we're going to just, the reason being because I think we have a different sort of opinion about the RSIS and about some of the other numbers, and I want to make sure that we get them correct.
Yes.
So that the record is right. Because there's multiple layers of parking here. There's the RSIS, there's the ordinance, there's the standard city ordinance, and there's a redevelopment plan, and then there's the deductions for EV charging.
Correct. And there's definitely some inconsistencies or alleged inconsistencies for the differing requirements. We will address that, and we are prepared to address it, just not through Jake.
Architecture is going to take care of that.
Or traffic.
Yeah, I think Anthony's going to break it down from the number of units. Mr. Valari will provide the testimony regarding.
Okay.
But we will address it.
The architect will agree on the bedrooms counts?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Absolutely, yes.
I don't want to test him.
Make sure of that. There's a question, and there's an issue, and I don't know whether you're going to want to answer it. You've prepared some landscape architectural plans, so has the architect. Then they conflict. So who's going to be the designer or the architect of record for the landscape architectural aspects, the planting design and the other elements, streetscape?
From my understanding, it would be my office. We have a registered landscape architect on staff.
Okay. So then I can direct this to you?
Yes.
There are things on the architecture plans that probably should be in your plans, and anything that's conflicting should be taken off of the other plans.
We will address that.
We'll make sure it corresponds.
And provider...
Have you reviewed our report with respect to the landscape architectural plantings?
Yeah, I have, and when it comes to landscape, you know, plantings, we can agree to work with you when it comes to the landscape component and finding any species or configurations that work. We're not married to any of the species or the type of plantings across the front.
Okay, did you speak with the city about the streetscape design? Was that worked out with the city? Who informed the streetscape design?
It was a combination of the architect, Mr. Vandermark and myself, and we came across this configuration.
Okay, from the city, or no?
I believe it was using aspects of the redevelopment plan.
I have a question about the tree guards on the detail.
Mm-hmm.
Are those permanent or are they temporary? It wasn't clear.
I believe those are going to be permanent, but we will provide clarity on that.
If they're going to be, yeah, we need to...
Because I believe that was on Mr. Vandermark's.
Oh, was it?
I believe that was, yes.
Okay. And you're, what about lighting?
Mr. Vandermark prepared a lighting plan. He'll go into details a little bit more about that.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
Just a couple of, by the way, just because there's some variances that are noted in Mike's report. So the variance for the rear yard setback, where are you, where's that being calculated from?
So that'd be calculated from the southerly property line. It's located on the left side of the page. There is, you're looking at it, it's the eighteen...
The Neptune side.
Yeah, the Neptune side.
Yeah, so you're calculating it from the lot line of Asbury, the Asbury Park property?
No, that'd be from the property line that is in Neptune, as part of that lot.
Okay.
So the municipal line is, you can slightly see it there, kind of traversing.
Generally located, take, where's that, where, the whole third, this little jagged edge going straight across. That is municipal law.
Right, but your calculation for the setback, is that from the municipal line? Was it from the lot?
No, that's from the edge of the lot, yeah.
The edge of the Neptune line?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear. And then there's also a reference to some encroachments on the Springwood Avenue side. If you look at page seven of the planning report. So you didn't address those encroachments at all?
So I think Mr. Vandermark, I think the encroachments have to do with portions of a building and then the streetscape components, and, you know, we're going to obtain all necessary approvals through council for any encroaching. And Mr. Vandermark will talk about the building components.
Okay, well, in your site plan, do you show that, just so the board can know?
Yeah, located, at least on Springwood Avenue. It's very tough to tell because it is such a small component, located on just the north side or the right side of the page.
And then the only other question I had, I didn't understand, going back to insights letter number forty-two, I didn't understand your answer relative to that one.
Just pull that one up real quick. For the letter of no interest from NJ Transit?
Yes.
Okay, so NJ Transit, it's actually NJ DOT rail. We started and we'll obtain all necessary approvals through that entity. They're responsible for...
So you don't have, you don't have a letter of no interest?
Correct, not at this time, no.
Any other questions from our professionals? No other questions from the board? All right, we move forward to the, any questions from the public regarding the testimony? No questions from the public? Okay, well, it certainly looks like you'll be coming back, no matter how we slice and dice this day.
Yes.
So I'm assuming that you have all your notes that you need as to what you have to bring back.
I do, indeed.
So that we can go through insight and make sure that we have everything that's not satisfied. I'm hoping to see a lot more satisfied next time we see you. Okay.
And did you want me to bring the architect up tonight, or...
I mean, we have, we have about fifteen minutes for the architect, so I think that we should keep going.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Let's bring up Anthony Vandermark. And Anthony, we'll have you sworn in.
Could you just raise your right hand, Mr. Vandermark? Sorry, I swear affirm the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And if you can state your name for the record and spell your last name, please.
Absolutely. That is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark is spelled V as in Victor, A-N-D-E-R-M-A-R-K.
And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed architect?
Yes, I am, and my license is in good standing. Just to give the board a little bit of background on myself, I am a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have four licenses, obviously, in the state of New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects. I have testified in front of the Asbury Park zoning board, my first time in front of the planning board this evening, as well as various other boards all across the state, including but not limited to Newark Zoning and Planning, Jersey City Zoning and Planning, Hoboken Zoning and Planning.
And your licenses are current and up to date?
Yes, it is.
And you've been accepted as a professional witness in those other venues?
Yes, I have.
Madam Chair, I'd ask that the board accept. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so you, I know we only have about fifteen minutes, and I know there's a lot of architectural testimony, and I know you're providing lighting testimony as well, and just for the record, you're familiar with the application, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the site?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the plans which have been submitted?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And you're also, for the record, here for the testimony of Jake and Modesto, and I know we sort of deferred a lot of things to you, so against that backdrop, wanted to take it away.
I thank everyone for being here, and I am not going to spring any new exhibits on this board. Everything I'm going to be presenting this evening is in front of you right now. I have rearranged some of the filing submission for better clarity for the board to understand and follow along. Again, just giving you a very brief overview of what we're presenting here this evening. It's a very large site here at the southeast corner of the intersection Memorial Drive and Springwood Avenue. It's at 49,857 square feet, 1.14 acres. We are proposing, again, a four-story, 45-foot in-height structure. In the structure, we have 92 units. Included in 92 units, we are providing 19 affordable units as part of this proposal. Of the 92 units, the breakdown is 21 studios, four of them which are affordable, 26 one-bedrooms, five of which are affordable, 41 two-bedrooms, nine of which are affordable, and four three-bedrooms, and at the moment, one is affordable. The overall proposal, again, going back to the parking, we are providing 110 parking spaces. This includes a plan for 24 of them to be shared. Again, included in the 110 parking spaces, we have 17 electric vehicle charging stations. We're proposing 202 bicycle parking spaces, 190 of them are within the building volume of building footprint, and we're proposing 12 outdoor bicycle parking spaces. As part of this proposal and presentation, we are proposing three retail spaces. Combined, a total of 4,075 square feet, and they're all located at the street frontages of both Springwood Avenue and Memorial Drive. At the second floor, proposing a 7,428-square-foot commercial office space. We have various amenities within the building at the second floor. We have a common amenity at 2,970. We have two courtyards at the second floor. We're providing a rooftop deck amenity at 3,445 square feet. And just to update Mr. Modesto's testimony, we are providing 7,263 square foot of extensive green roofing area. That is the equivalent to 23% of the overall roof area of the upper roof. Ah, here we go.
Thank you to our technical assistant.
Very much, Arina. Plans in front of you are the same as what I'm providing here via monitor, and they should be dated 3/4/22.
Yes.
We already spoke about the site. We already spoke about the existing conditions of the site, one-story structure in desperate need of some help. Again, all structures on site are due to be raised, and all the current trees are due to be also removed from the site proper. So in front of you, you have the overall site plan. So, in front of you, you have the overall site plan. Outlined, you have an irregular building shape, shaped as a W. Existing site is very unconventional. It's irregular. There's no parallel property lines to the site. There's no 90-degree angles to the property lines on the site. There's a significant drainage pipe, as Mr. Modesto had mentioned. It's at the southern portion of the property. This had impact on both the parking and the way the building was configured at the end of the day, which then leads us to one of our setback variances. There's a substantial grade change from the northern part of the site at Springwood Avenue all the way to the southern part of the site at Memorial Drive. The grade difference is as great as almost five feet between the top of one street to the bottom of the next street. So, this is what kind of drives the clearance height variance at the loading zone. At the first floor, again, here in the monitor in sheet Z3, the lot coverage we're proposing is at 93.6% and at 46,678 square feet. I apologize for flipping the actual floor plan as opposed to the civil. Memorial Drive is to the bottom of the page, and Springwood Avenue is to the left. We do have open air against the rail line with some landscaping and some nosing parking around the perimeter of the property. As part of the W-shaped configuration as shown before you, we have two courtyards, one north, one south. We have a Chamford corner at the intersection of Memorial Drive and Springwood Avenue, which is a building design feature. Springwood site frontage at the property line is 148 linear feet, so it's a substantial frontage that the site actually has of Springwood Avenue. The Memorial Drive frontage property line runs approximately 357 linear feet to the west. The track frontage is at 321 linear feet, and the rear southern portion frontage is at 177.5 feet. Mr. Modesto had testified. They are proposing 15 new street trees. We do agree to change the species. It'll all be consistent and in compliance with the planner's report. We're providing all new sidewalks, all new curving. Again, as previously mentioned, we have two 20-foot-wide curb cuts, one on Springfield Avenue and the other one on Memorial Drive. I will get into the setback as I get into the second floor plan here. As you move up the building line, the second floor deck is at approximately 77% lot coverage at 38,515, and the third and fourth floors at 64% lot coverage and 31,918. We'll go back to the illumination levels a little further in my testimony. Going back to the first floor, one of the intents of the architectural design and this proposal is to kind of engage the street and enhance the pedestrian street experience. So, on Springwood Avenue, which is the left graphic here, we are providing four new street trees. But in addition to the four new street trees, we are providing building-based planter boxes, okay? So, we're providing landscaping. And we have an understanding that that sidewalk from building face to outer edge is at eight feet. To the front of the curb line, it's at seven foot six. The intent was to provide these design and landscape elements, but still providing a fully functional sidewalk and ADA compliant. So, as you start to the east on Springwood Avenue and you work your way down page to the west towards Memorial Avenue, you can see we have a street tree, we have the driveway apron curb cut, another street tree, a building-lined planter at two-foot depth, a street tree, a building-lined planter, a street tree, and then we have the corner element, which is a corner bench seat with another tree, which makes 16. And we have some building-based landscaping that kind of hugs retail space number one at the corner. Few things of note here about the Springwood elevation again. Full ADA compliance with clearances, all to the tree pit or actually tree surround, which is a permanent addition to the street frontage, as well as the building-based two-foot-deep planter bed. And if you want, I can just zoom in to these elements here. So, again, building planter, that's at sidewalk level, and that has a surround, which is an ornamental railing. And we do have a tree surround, again, with ornamental railing. This is for tree protection from pets and pedestrians and so forth. Now, I understand that the ordinance has a height requirement that these elements should be approximately five feet in height. In our detail, we haven't shown it 18 inches. And through experience, we find this to be sufficient to stop both pedestrians walking into the tree pit and also animals from climbing into the tree pit. As I work my way back down Memorial Drive, we have the 11 street trees and, again, building-line planners at majority of the access points. In addition, now, since we are on our own property, we have provided street benches or pedestrian benches up against the building line. So, we're providing four benches. We're providing 11 trees, and we have various planter boxes at this frontage. Working your way inside the building...
You know, can I just stop you for one second, because I think this is important? I know when we spoke, you spoke very passionately about engaging not just one side or one road in streetscape. So, I think that that's important, that you're engaging. And I think that was actually something that the city representatives said to us from the beginning was important.
Yes, I think it is very important. You know, I've been to this site on numerous occasions. Bolt Springwood Avenue, you know, once you cross the tracks, very few pedestrians, you know, on this side of the street and as well on Memorial Drive, which is on the eastern side of Memorial Drive here. So, you know, I think these embellishments certainly can bring, you know, a better pedestrian experience and more people to this location. You know, I had the ability, due to the dedication and the expansion of Memorial Drive, to, you know, provide this benching and this landscaping and these street trees here at this location. So, we think it certainly kind of falls in line with Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan is looking for.
And Anthony, I believe what I referenced in one of my opening comments is that the redevelopment plan talks about a, quote, "people-centered environment." Any opinions on that?
Well, that's correct, and I think, at least from an exterior standpoint, at the sidewalk and at the pedestrian level, we have agreed to that. We have...
And we have what we would say is a welcoming environment?
Yes, we do, yes. If you work your way inside the building, again, on the Springwood Avenue frontage, we are providing, west of the curb cut, we're providing a 1,470-square-foot retail space, which is labeled Retail 3, at the corner. And you will see an architectural element at the corner, again, landscaping, some pedestrian seating. We have retail space number one at 1,305 square feet. We have the residential lobby offset the corner on Memorial Drive. Further down the page, as we work south fronting Memorial Drive, we have a meter space location. Going into some of the testimony that Mr. Modesto provided earlier, we envision this building to be predominantly electric. The only gas component in this building would be the rooftop-mounted generator. So, you will have a water meter, probably a singular or two gas meters, and electric meters for the 92 units. This owner will have the ability to provide one electrical service and one electrical meter as a house meter and then sub-meter the tenants for the 92 units. That approach has not been finalized yet. We're providing bike storage with some additional parking at the front wall of Memorial Drive. We're providing a 377-square-foot refuge and trash storage area. We will be asking for a deviation for this size of the refuge and trash storage area. As mentioned earlier, there will be an independent carding service for this building. This will not be municipal, so we can control the frequency in which the trash and recycling is removed from this building. Therefore, we are requesting a deviation for a reduced size. The land use ordinance requires approximately 1,100 square foot of trash and recycling room, and we did not have enough frontage to actually give that. Adjacent to the trash room is the commercial lobby with its own independent elevator for the second-floor commercial office space. That's at 370 square feet. Working further to the south, we have 1,300-square-foot retail space, labeled Retail Space Number 2, some additional bike storage with a fix-it station as per the redevelopment plan and land use ordinance, followed by an electrical transformer to step down the power, and the Memorial Drive greater garage door light, 20-foot-wide curb cut. And we work our way south with our retaining wall that just screens in the parking. It provides privacy and security for the interior parking garage. Centrally located, we do have one ADA van space. It does share with the loading. We will stripe this differently. We do have the additional eight feet to provide an ADA van drop-off space, which will reduce the loading space or loading bay to approximately 27 feet, which is still compliant with the 25-foot requirement in depth. We're providing a 20-foot, 11-feet-wide loading width, again, with the column. It is slightly reduced to 19 and a half feet. The interior of the parking garage, I know we had talked about reduction of drive-by width due to some of the structural elements. We will be, in all cases, or trying to actually bring that column line in of the drive-by width, thus bringing most conditions into conformance of a 24-foot-wide drive-by. In the double parking configuration here, the upper portion, which is here, will be a mechanical stacked parking configuration. It's called a lift-and-slide configuration that is starting to be used very often here in the state of New Jersey. My company did one of the first North American mechanical lift-slide systems back in 2008 and is still in operation today. I have an exhibit for the board if the board would like to see how these systems actually work. If not, we are providing 36 mechanical parking spaces that will be dedicated to the residential portion of this property.
I think we will, but not today.
Excuse me?
I think we will, but not today.
Okay, very good. Located along the rail line, again, in yellow, we have the 24 shared spaces. And as Mr. Modesto had previously testified to, we have landscaping that runs both along the retaining wall of the rail line and also the southern portion of the property. Again, 17 electrical vehicle charging stations.
So, all 17 are located on the south... Sorry, east portion of the wall there?
We have some on the eastern portion, and we also cautiously provided one at the ADA parking spaces as well. Because, again, you cannot dictate and/or determine where these electrical vehicles will be provided. So, along Memorial Drive, along the ADA parking space is located here and also here. In these parking spaces along Memorial Drive, we do have electrical vehicle charging stations. So, they are scattered throughout the garage. It's not one particular pattern, you know, that was provided.
Did you say the building's completely bioelectric? So, heating is bioelectric?
Yes, the heating will be bioelectric. And on larger buildings of this size, that becomes quite common because the amount of gas piping involved, piped to each 92 units. And again, we're not supposed to talk about expense in front of the board, but it's substantial.
All right, will that conclude your Z5 exhibit?
This concludes my Z5 exhibit.
Okay, I think that this would be a good time for us to take a moment. I don't know if we want to have the board, if they have any questions at this point about what was testified, or we can also reserve the right to ask the same last questions next time you come, because we do have another application.
I'm fine either way.
Do you have anything that you'd like to ask now before we... Instead of waiting? Anyone?
I have one. I know you said there's only one van accessible ADA space that's mixed with the loading zone. I do see the other area, they have the handicap spaces there.
Yes.
It has the hash next to it. Is that not also, both those areas, those aren't vans accessible? They're not wide enough, probably?
It's not wide enough for a van. We're required to provide one, and we are required to provide five ADA spaces in this garage based on the number. So, we are only required to provide one ADA van space.
Yep, okay.
One thing that I would like to request, and I'm sure your attorneys know that this is something that's not uncommon for me, is that when you're coming out of the, on the Memorial Ave, next time you come, and I'm not sure who on your team would do this, but as you're coming out of the driveway, there is a home there. But I'm not quite sure about the angles and how you can, how will they be bothered by the lights coming out of the driveway at any time of day?
Okay.
So, it's hard for us to tell because that's not on the plan.
Right.
Where, what's right across the street from the driveway, and that would be the one on Memorial. Okay?
Yep.
Do our professionals have anything they would like to ask or wait until next time? Any burning questions?
I think I can wait till next time.
Okay.
I don't want to get started.
And I thank you for that.
Many characters are looking at me like...
All right, all right, well, we thank you for coming. This looks like a great development. And if you could, Irina, we have our time. What is it, the beginning of June?
Yes, the next available date we have is June 6.
Yes, and I would respectfully ask that we be carried without the need for any further public notice to June 6, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And, Madam Chair, on behalf of my client, I consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act.
I'd like to make... Can I get a motion to... What was the date again? June 6? June 6 without notice. Okay.
I have a list of library flowers and a second of our plan. Mayor Delmar?
Yes.
Tell the woman about the...
Von, are you okay, Von? Yes?
James Van Adams?
Yes.
Rachel Stoudamire?
It's going to the plane, I guess.
Rick Plummer?
Yes.
Robert Krista?
Yes. Yes. Right, we have a court with that.
And Irina, last question, just so that I'm clear. Any revised plans would need to be submitted to your wonderful office on or before...
In order for the board professionals to provide updated letters, they have to be received by May 12.
May 12, thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Definitely. Good. Got it. Got it.
All right, who's next?
It's the narrower, the narrower frontage becomes the...
No, no, he's talking about this.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
I mean, if they're going to consolidate, it's all made from one lot.
There you go.
You know what? This is a John Drew question. I think... I think... I think... I think... So if you, so if it's a different zone, if it's a different...
It felt like ours, right?
That's what I think.
Oh, right. Yeah, no matter what, when you go into Neptune, it's a new zone.
Just to make sure that that actually...
Let's get it done.
You have the difference. So then, so you have the uniform... Right? And they call them visions. So visions...
What do you want? Okay.
You reference you have.
From the building up above?
We can talk more about that. You can't see it from the architecture.
They're shown on the architect's plan, right?
Well, you can see it. But it's not shown. It should be shown.
Yeah, we usually, yeah, we would. Showing overhang, yeah.
It should be shown, but there's a show to the ground level, you're just showing it from the ground. And then, right, and then it should be. It should be. Sorry, I didn't get that part. But we, they need to... But you're actually left, even if it's the same dog. But you're in sight to the zone.
Is that a flat? She was big. Not pissed, right?
No.
I know. And this is not you, you said.
Nope.
Yeah, I'm trying to find her.
It's okay.
Oh, wait. I think something came up here. I'll try.
It's crazy.
I get credit tonight, I hope.
Real set? All right. All right, Mr. Caris, floor is yours.
Thank you. If I may, Andrew Caris of the firm Fox Rothschild, on behalf of the applicant Partner Properties LLC. We're here for two, in a sense, applications. It's a joint application between the two properties as they are going to be utilized together, in a sense, as one site. U1 property is at 929 Asbury Ave., more formerly known as Block 403, Lot 11. Size of that property is 20,250 square feet, existing on the site as an exist, is a vacant, rather, commercial building. It's within the B zone. There's another site that is connected to this at 1,000 First Ave., Block 404, Lot 8, lot size 11,250 square feet, that will serve as the accessory parking lot for the property at 929 Asbury Avenue. Currently, there is a vacant commercial building on that site, and that property is located in the LI zone. For the board's certification, the ordinances, the zoning ordinances in Asbury Park specifically allow for accessory parking lots in the B and LI zones under Section 30-71.2. Under Section 30-59.8, off-street parking is allowed if it's located within 600 feet measured along adjacent streets. So you can have an accessory parking lot in the LI or the B zone, as long as it's within 600 feet of the primary lot. In turn, as reflected also in the planner's report, there is no zoning relief, and that is permitted within the use of these two properties. Now, what is being proposed here, what's important is this application is not by a developer, rather, it is by an engineering firm that is looking to make this its headquarters. It is a property that we're talking about serves as a gateway into the Main Street area. It's an important site, leads to the downtown, leads to Main Street, which we're seeing a lot of activity on, also to the beach area. In turn, as it's serving as a gateway, the visual impact of this property will be significant. And as you'll see as we go through the design, I believe the design that has been incorporated into the building provides a significant aesthetic benefit to the area that is worthy of its place being within the gateway into the Main Street area and the downtown. The parking that is required is 65 parking spaces. It's going to be, in a sense, split between the two different lots, we'll go into the computations. 68 parking spaces is required, so enough parking is being provided. When we actually take into account the EV parking spaces, the requirement is even less. We're familiar with the EV parking, but we certainly meet the demand with this property. I'm going to first provide testimony from my client, Mr. Giuliano, to go through why this site has been chosen here in Asbury Park for partner engineering to make it, in a sense, its headquarters here, the amount of people that are going to be coming to Asbury Park, working at this facility, and obviously become part of the Asbury Park community. So I'd like to start with my client, Michael Giuliano, to give a little bit of a background in terms of what we're looking to accomplish and how the property is going to be utilized.
Hello, everyone. Would I be sworn?
Yes. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And just for the record, our own board professionals have already been sworn in with a prior application.
Okay. Very good. If I may? I ask Andy to let me speak first tonight for a few minutes, because I want to introduce the company, myself, explain why our president, who will reside in this operation, cannot be here because he had to decide on staying married and be here and go on vacation with his family for being here and not staying married. So he wanted to make that clear. He'll be at the next meeting.
It's a good choice.
Yeah. Well, we'll see when he comes back. I understand what you're doing. I'm also chairman of a joint land use board of a small beach community in Ocean County, so I get the whole system. I'm an engineer, I'm not here as an engineer tonight, stockholder and a principal in partner. We, I want to explain what we're not. We are not a developer. We are not contract purchasers. We're not property flippers. We, as of this afternoon, I asked HR, we have 1,341 employees throughout 40-something offices in the United States. We're also in Canada, Poland, and London. And this all occurred since 2007. Company was started in Southern California in 2007. We have our West Coast headquarters outside of Los Angeles in Torrance. This is our East Coast headquarters, more president, myself, and a bunch of other executives and about 50 assessors reside. We looked at many places, and we just wanted the board to know that, but we were wooed hard by Fort Monmouth. We looked, we started originally in Red Bank on the East Coast, went to Eaton Town, and now we want to become owners and be here. We purchased these two sites. We own them in fee, no mortgages. We bought them outright. We put 929 under contract, and we would not close on it until we were able to acquire another lot within 600 feet, because we wanted to be able to provide parking. We did not want a parking waiver variance. We want our people, there's about 50 people who show up on a daily basis. There's a little more sign there, but we see about 50 people. We wanted to make sure we had adequate parking. So we own the property. We're fully committed. We understand that this is a gateway project on the west side of Memorial Drive. We're all excited about it. And a couple of things, I mean, we've been engaged with Asbury for years. My own family, my daughter's rehearsal dinner, all of the Ohio family, my, her-in-laws stayed at the Asbury Hotel, we had the thing at the Porta. We have our holiday party for the last seven or eight years at Watermark. I mean, we're here, we're here all the time. Our president grew up in Tipton Falls, he wanted to be here, wanted to be here, so we're going to be here. So we're completely committed, we're engaged with Coastal Habitat, we do team build with them every year. So I just wanted you to know, we're already engaged with this community, we just don't reside here yet. And our presence on the East Coast is growing, growing. As I said, we have 40-something offices around the country. Many are on the East Coast. So unless there's any questions for me, I just wanted to introduce the company. I hope I did. I hope I explained how committed we are and excited to be here. And, unless you have anything else I should bring up?
Very good. We'll probably be calling you back with regard to certain issues as we go through this, but thank you for the context of the application.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. As my next witness, I will call our engineer, Daphne Galvin.
Solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record and spell your last name, please?
Daphne Galvin, G-A-L-V-I-N.
If you don't mind actually, how do you spell Daphne?
D-A-P-H-N-E.
Thank you.
Daphne, if you can please give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience.
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from Lafayette College. I also have a graduate certificate in project management from NJIT. I obtained my professional engineering license in New Jersey in 1989, so I have over 35 years of experience in all aspects of site design, from due diligence and site feasibility through design, permitting, and construction on commercial, industrial, and residential properties for both private and public clients. And I've been accepted as a witness and testified before dozens of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including Asbury Park.
In your capacity as an engineer, am I correct?
Yes, and my license is current.
I would. From Ms. Galvin, as an expert in engineering?
Yes.
You're familiar with this property, am I correct? Both properties, I should say, 929 Asbury Ave., 1,000 First Ave.
That's correct.
What I'd like to do is go through the existing property as it stands now, and then we're going to go through what the proposal is in terms of the property.
Sure. So what we'll use as a display at this point is sheet number three of 10 of our site plan.
All right. What I'm going to do is I'm going to take the site plan, we're going to mark it as A1 for identification, and what I want to do is just get the last revision date so we can note that.
Yes, the last revision date is February 2 of 2022.
Okay, please go on.
So just to get everybody oriented on the sheet, north is generally up. Asbury Avenue runs along the bottom of the sheet from west to east. Langford Street runs in the center of the sheet from Asbury up towards First Avenue, and then First Avenue runs along the top of the sheet, again, west to east. So that gives everybody an orientation where the site is. And over a little bit further to the east would be Memorial Drive and railroad tracks. The parcel at the intersection of Asbury Avenue and Langford, it has a street address of 929 Asbury Avenue and is known as Block 403, Lot 11. It contains 0.46 acres and is located in the B business district. The parcel at the intersection of Langford and First, up in this location here, has a street address of 1,000 First Avenue and is known as Block 404, I'm sorry, Lot 8. It contains 0.26 acres and is located in the LI light industrial zone. The zone limit between the B and the LI zone runs right along this property line right here, like mid-block. So that's the line between the B zone, which fronts on Asbury, and the LI zone, which fronts on First Avenue. Asbury Avenue is also known as Monmouth County Route 66. It has a 100-foot right-of-way and allows for two-way traffic. Parking and sidewalks exist on both sides. There's also a bus stop along Asbury Avenue just off the southeast corner of the existing building, right, right about in here. And the intersection of Asbury and Langford Street is signalized. Langford Street is a local street with a 60-foot right-of-way. It also allows for two-way traffic and has sidewalks and parking on both sides. First Avenue, up along the top of the sheet, is also a local street and has a 100-foot right-of-way. It allows two-way traffic and does have sidewalks and parking on both sides also. The surrounding area is a mix of uses, mostly commercial and industrial with some residential. With respect to the two properties, I'll first talk about the Asbury Avenue site at the intersection.
Hold on, hold on.
So at 929 Asbury Avenue, the site is currently developed with an existing industrial facility. There's two buildings. One building, the main building, is right at the intersection, this building right in here. Second building is along the easterly property line over in this area here, it's dashed in. That's the second building. The site is 100% impervious and slopes towards both Asbury Avenue and also down the driveway onto Langford. This 100% impervious coverage exceeds the 80% that's allowed in the B district. In addition, there's an existing setback for the building along the easterly property line of only 0.36 feet, where 10 feet would be required. The second parcel, which is the 1,000 First Avenue site, is currently developed as commercial space and has one building, which is in this area over here along the westerly property line, dashed in, and a parking lot. It has access via First Avenue, there are actually two driveways along First Avenue. There's also a depressed curb along Langford that runs about 120 feet and provides kind of an open access from the parking lot out onto Langford. So it's kind of an uncontrolled access across the sidewalk. This site is just over 90%, 9.2% impervious, and slopes towards Langford and First, and that coverage at 90.2% is slightly in excess of the 90% allowed by the LI district. There's also a setback, an existing setback variance over here for the building that's just under five feet, where five feet is required. I just want to jump back to the Asbury Avenue site for a second. I forgot to mention the access. There's access provided along both Asbury Avenue, which is a two-way access, and then there's also access provided out to Langford, which is another two-way access drive. In the proposed condition, I'm going to first talk about 929 Asbury. The three-story building will remain near the intersection. It will be renovated inside and out into office space, as will be described by the project architect. The main entrance to the site will still be along the east side of a building along Asbury Avenue, with a secondary entrance out to Langford. However, we're going to modify the entrance along Asbury Avenue, we're going to narrow it down slightly to reduce the width of the driveway. And then for circulation, the driveway at Langford will become just an exit drive as opposed to being a two-way drive. The two-story building along the easterly property line will be demolished, which eliminates that existing variance in the rear corner for that building. The existing parking lot in the center of the site will... The main entrance to the, to the site will still be along, uh, the east side of, of the building along Asbury Avenue, with a secondary entrance out to Langford. However, we're going to modify the entrance along Asbury Avenue. We're going to narrow it down slightly, um, to reduce the width of the driveway. And then, for circulation, the driveway at Langford will become just an exit drive as opposed to being a two-way drive. The two-story building along the easterly property line will be demolished, uh, which eliminates that existing variance in the rear corner for that building. The existing parking lot in the center of the site will be expanded into the area where the building is being demolished. That parking lot will comply with the B Business District design requirements.
And the number of parking spaces that will be created?
The total number of parking spaces on this site would be thirty-six. Um, that includes three accessible parking spaces. The parking is for employees and visitors, although there's very limited visitors that come to the site. Uh, we don't have many others, just staff will primarily use that parking lot. Also, within the center of the parking lot, we have ten tandem spaces. So, those are stacked, two stacked spaces, which will be utilized by company vehicles. We have about a half a dozen company vehicles and staff. Due to these restrictions, the proposed tandem spaces allow for adequate access and do not create an unsafe, um, condition for either pedestrians or the vehicles. Signs will be added to these spaces to indicate that they are not for visitors. In addition, a minimum of one space will be designated for EV, for an electric vehicle. Um, we do need one design exception, uh, for the parking spaces proposed along the north edge of the building, where a ten-foot setback from Langford is required, and we have six point seven feet. As I mentioned, uh, before, we're going to maintain the existing driveway access from Asbury Avenue, just narrowing the driveway width a little bit from about thirty feet to twenty-four feet. There's also new curb proposed along a majority of the frontage, starting at the easterly property line right over here, westerly to just before the intersection itself.
Now, across the street from that driveway that we're looking at, nine twenty-nine on Asbury Ave, that's another commercial building, am I correct?
Yeah, that's the, um, the cafe, the Chattanooga, right across the street on the corner.
Okay. Go on.
Okay. Um, right now, the, across the frontage of the site between the curb and the right-of-way line, uh, it's all sidewalk. What we've proposed, what we're proposing to do here is to remove a portion of the sidewalk that's immediately adjacent to the curb line and provide a landscape strip in that location to soften the view of the building, um, and street trees will be provided. We'll have a landscape architect actually testify to the proposed landscaping, uh, later on. Um, the plan, as I mentioned before, As, uh, Asbury Avenue is a county road. We've already submitted to the county planning board and received the conditional approval from the county. Mentioned that the Langford Avenue, uh, access will be revised from a two-way access to just an exit. Uh, that driveway in the existing condition is about a foot off of the northerly property line. We're going to maintain that, and that requires a, um, design exception because there's a five-foot requirement for driveway setbacks.
That, that's a coming out of that driveway that you just pointed out. Is that, uh, any headlights going directly into any residential property?
No. There's a commercial building across the street, directly across the street.
Please go on.
Yes. Okay. Uh, due to the site configuration with the building being at the corner of the intersection, we would expect that any emergency vehicles will utilize the adjacent roadways. Uh, we don't expect any emergency vehicles to actually come onto the property. With respect to loading, we are not proposing a loading space. Our operations don't require loading. Um, the only vehicles that, besides the employees and visitors that would access the site would be a UPS or FedEx delivery. They'll come in off of Asbury Avenue, park, drop off or pick up, and then exit out onto Langford. Uh, there, in the center of the site, between the building and the parking lot, we have an, an open space area for the employees, proposed to be pavers, there's some landscaping around it, so this is the open-air area, uh, being provided for the employees. There is a six-foot-high decorative aluminum fence proposed. Uh, that fencing will complement the building. It's proposed along Asbury Avenue and then along the easterly and northerly property lines, and also along the short section of Langford there. That fence is proposed to secure the parking lot and the main entrance to the building, which is right in this area here. That's the existing entrance, and we're maintaining that existing entrance as the main entrance to the building.
Is there also an area for ingress and egress into, into and out of the building on Langford?
Yes. There's a secondary access point at about the midpoint of the building over here on Langford, and that would be used primarily for employees. Also in this area, just north of the, um, of that secondary entrance are bike racks that are proposed out within the, uh, Langford Street right-of-way.
What is the width of the sidewalk on the Langford Ave side?
Hmm, three to four feet.
Okay. So, is there a narrow, am I correct?
It's narrow. Well, it's typical for a street sidewalk. With respect to, oh, one other comment about the fences. Any of the fencing proposed along the Asbury right-of-way line or the Langford right-of-way line will be set back one foot as required by the city. That's also required by the county. So, we'll meet that requirement with the setback for the fence. From a stormwater management standpoint on this property, we're maintaining the overall drainage patterns out to Asbury Avenue and to Langford Street, and we're not creating any adverse impacts on the adjoining properties. The proposed improvements result in a slight decrease in impervious surface from one hundred percent to ninety-six point eight percent. So, there'll also be a slight decrease in stormwater runoff. Since there is no increase in the impervious coverage, we're not required to retain any of the stormwater on-site. With respect to roof runoff, the existing discharge, roof discharges through a series of downspouts that go out through the sidewalk and out through the curb line in, uh, Langford, and then that runoff flows in a northerly direction along Langford. In the proposed condition, we will maintain that approach and will also repair the deteriorated sidewalk and curb in the locations where those connections exist. Uh, there's new site lighting proposed. It would be a combination of pole-mounted and building-mounted fixtures. That will be presented by the, uh, project architect and our landscape architect. The proposed landscaping, including on-site and along Asbury Avenue, will also be presented by the, uh, landscape architect. There's proposed signage for the building or for the project, all of which is attached to the building. That will be described by the project architect. With respect to utilities, most of the existing utilities are being upgraded. I believe when the plans were submitted, uh, the design of the building hadn't progressed a long enough, and we thought that we'd be able to utilize most of the existing services, but it looks like most of those will be upgraded. That will also be discussed by, uh, the project architect.
What about deliveries to the site, uh, either UPS or FedEx type trucks?
Sure. So, those vehicles would access off of Asbury Avenue, come in, stop right in front of the main door, drop off or pick up, and then lead the site through the Langford, uh, exit drive.
And the nature of the deliveries? You're not talking about huge tractor trailers, am I correct?
No, no, no. These are typical vans, typical UPS or FedEx vans.
Please go on.
Uh, there are right-of-way encroachments proposed along Asbury and Langford, uh, first along Asbury. We, as a condition of our approval from the Monmouth County Planning Board, we need to obtain an easement to allow for the encroachment to accommodate the facade treatment and the signs that are proposed. Again, that will be discussed in more detail by the architect. There's also right-of-way encroachments along Langford, this section right here. Uh, the main encroachment is at that secondary entrance I mentioned before, where there's a canopy that overhangs, um, from the right-of-way line. Um, and there's also a sign, a, what I consider a blade sign, a vertical sign band, uh, adjacent to that canopy.
Which we're aware we would have to get approval from the mayor council with regard to the yard.
Yeah, that's correct. The one thing I didn't mention, um, and I should have, is that the building falls right on the right-of-way line, both the Asbury Avenue right-of-way line and the Langford line, the building sits right on the line. So, that means any, uh, the facade treatments that we're talking about or any signage gets installed along the facade of the building is going to create an enclosure. Um, let's see. All right. Now, let's jump over to the First Avenue site, which is up in this area here. So, the existing one-story building will be demolished and the parking lot expanded into that area to provide a total of thirty-two parking spaces on this site. That brings the grand total of parking to sixty-eight spaces. The demolition of the existing building eliminates an existing, uh, variance for a side yard setback that occurred at that building. The existing parking lot grades are around seven percent in some areas, and those are being maintained. These are acceptable slopes. Reducing the slope isn't feasible because it would require full reconstruction of the pavement area. Um, we don't think that that's necessary. Parking, um, along First Avenue, there are, there are parking setbacks that have to be honored. The parking setback required along, um, First Avenue has to meet the building setback. The building setback along this stretch is a maximum of ten feet. We're proposing five feet, so we actually comply with the parking setback along First. Along Langford, a ten-foot parking setback is required, and we're proposing five feet. Um, so we need a design exception for the five feet. Uh, just in general, for, with the parking lots, we've got a seventy-five-foot lot here and a parking lot that's sixty-foot wide. We have fifteen feet to play with, so to speak. We provided ten feet on the, um, westerly property line, property line adjacent to the, um, to the east to the west, and the five feet along the Langford, uh, right-of-way line.
And you say you provided, provided it for what?
Uh, to provide landscaping. Access to the site will be, will continue to be off of First Avenue, uh, but we're going to close one of the driveways and just consolidate the access to a single driveway, which is just, creates a better circulation pattern. Um, and also provides a little more space for on-street parking, um, along First Avenue. There's new curb proposed along that frontage. Um, that new curb will have a, uh, about a four-inch curb face, which is a little less than what the city normally requires, but that's what the existing curb face is that's out there, and we want to maintain what's out there. In addition, the new driveway is twenty-three feet from the right-of-way line of Langford Street, where there's a fifty-foot requirement. So, that's a little bit closer than the existing driveway, which is about thirty feet away, but we think that by consolidating the two driveways into a single driveway provides for better access to the site, even though it's a little bit closer to the intersection. Along Langford, approximately a hundred and twenty feet of the curb there is depressed. Um, immediately behind the depressed curb is a driveway apron and a sidewalk, and then it's paved. So, so the way this site functions right now, it's just kind of a wide-open parking lot where anybody can pull on and off the site onto Langford Street. So, what we're going to do is we're going to eliminate that depressed curb along Langford and put in a full-face curb. Um, replace the driveway aprons with a grass strip so that we have a typical configuration of the curb, the grass strip, and the sidewalk. The sidewalk will remain, and then we have, uh, grass and landscaping up to the, where the parking lot is proposed on the site. And that curb, by the way, will, uh, will be closer to the six-inch requirement that the city has as its standard because that's what exists out there right now. With respect to fencing, it's a similar proposal as we had over on the Asbury Avenue site, six-foot-high decorative aluminum fence along the Langford and First Avenue right-of-way lines, and then also along the westerly line. Gates are proposed along, uh, both First Avenue, and there's also a pedestrian gate at the southeast corner that allows for easy access for people, um, trying to get over to the main site on Asbury Avenue. The, uh, the fence along, uh, first feet does meet that one-foot, uh, offset from the right-of-way line, and the fence along Langford is five feet, so it complies with the one-foot requirement. There's no fence proposed along the southerly, uh, limit of that property because the existing building is right at that southerly property line, um, and we're, but we're not going to attach the, uh, fence to the building. It'll just be a, a post to end the, the fence at the southerly end, so it won't be attached to the building.
What about EV parking on that site?
There'll be, um, one, there's a minimum of, uh, one space required. We actually expect that on both lots. At some point, we'll probably increase the, the number of those spaces, but we'll start with one space on each lot. For stormwater management on the, the First Avenue site, again, we're maintaining the overall drainage patterns out to Langford and to First, um, not creating any adverse impacts on the adjoining properties. The proposed improvements will result in a decrease in impervious surface from ninety point two percent to seventy-five point three percent. So, there's also a decrease in the stormwater runoff. Since there's no increase in impervious coverage, we're not required to retain any of the stormwater on-site. In addition, by reducing the impervious to below the ninety percent maximum that's allowed on the site, we eliminate another variance, um, that exists. Site lighting is also proposed, uh, with pole-mounted fixtures. This will be discussed by the, uh, landscape architect. They'll also discuss the proposed landscaping within the site and along the, uh, right-of-ways. Uh, with respect to signage, uh, there's no proposed signage for this parcel except for some small signs, uh, that'll be attached to the fences to identify the parking lot as a private parking lot for partner engineering, so that it's known that it's not open to the public. Um, I wanted to do also just a parking summary because we're dealing with two sites here, thought it'd be helpful to summarize it. So, the parking that's required for the office use is based on one parking space per three hundred gross square feet of floor area. The building's square footage is ninety thousand three hundred and eighty square feet. That requires sixty-five parking spaces. We're proposing thirty-two parking spaces on, on the First Avenue parcel and thirty-six parking spaces on the Asbury Avenue parcel for a total of sixty-eight parking spaces, which is slightly in excess of the sixty-five required. And then, based on those sixty-eight spaces provided, we require three ADA parking spaces, including a van-accessible space. So, we're proposing three ADA spaces on the Asbury Avenue site along, including two van-accessible spaces, so we meet the requirement for the ADA spaces. And as I just mentioned, we're going to provide the, um, one EV parking space on each site, which technically would allow us to reduce the parking requirement by four parking spaces from sixty-five to sixty-one. All those parking spaces are usable, safe, and conveniently arranged. Uh, as I mentioned, the off-premises parking on the First Avenue parcel is primarily for employees, and it provides a safe, convenient location and access from the main parking lot and also from the employee access on the west side of the building. Um, that's it.
Any other questions of this witness, um, before I get to the reports?
Yes, if you don't mind, um, one of the things that I wanted to find out is that on the west side of the, uh, L-one zone where the parking lot is, I know that you'd mentioned that there's a building that butts up against it on the south side. What's on the west side?
The west side is a commercial property. There's, you can see right over here, there's a building, um, that probably takes up just over half of the depth of the lot. You can see it's got the little dash marks on the edge here. That's the limits of the existing building, so it's set a couple of feet off of the property line. And then there's an open, um, area, I think there's a loading, depressed loading dock.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, it's a loading dock.
Yeah.
And could we also, um, because I know that you've mentioned about changing, changing the driveways and, and, you know, and also modifying where people can just like kind of drive up on the curb cut today? Can you just give us some idea, and it doesn't have to be right now, is that about, about, you know, the parking spaces or the ability to park? So, are we saying that there's, you're increasing the amount of parking that's legal, if you want to call it that?
Yeah.
Or what, what's happening?
Sure. So, so right now, the configuration, I would call it kind of haphazard. The building, you can see the building here is, is the, uh, the rectangle with the dashes in it. So, this area here is the building, and then you can park just to the south of the building, right in this area. And then along the east side of the building, there's a driveway aisle, and then the pavement just extends all the way to the sidewalk on Langford. So, I think the, the general parking configuration there is what we're proposing. It's just parking perpendicular to Langford. However, when you're pulling in and pulling out, you can just pull in right off of Langford. So, it's a, it's really not a safe situation. Um, so, we're going to eliminate that situation and, you know, provide a more typical parking lot, uh, that's, has a landscape strip before you get to the sidewalk of Langford and eliminate the depression on Langford, so it doesn't look like a driveway anymore.
So, so on Langford, now, I'm not really familiar, can, can you park on both sides?
Well...
Of the street?
Well, not there because...
No, not, not there now?
No.
Currently, you cannot.
Once the curbing goes up, you're increasing.
Yeah, she'd be allowed now, yeah. So, a hundred and twenty feet would give you somewhere around five parking spaces, you know, of, you know, on-street parking would be improved by eliminating that depression.
Yeah, but when the church has services, people park there and stuff.
Okay. All right.
Do the parking lots have gates, sort of like on Asbury, so like during, whatever they, have like a, a FedEx truck come? Are they closed during the day?
No.
Gates are open. Gates are open.
Yeah, gates are open. So, during the day, the gates are open. Uh, so, we don't really feel the need to secure the site during the day.
In the plan thing that you, you said there was a bus stop and put in the Asbury Avenue?
Yes.
So, the plan thing is about to say, you, you said you're taking out the sidewalk or you're putting in the tree path?
Yes. So, I think it's eight feet. So, for the first eight feet behind the curb line, we're, it's at five feet... So for the first eight feet behind the curb line, we're, it's at five feet here.
Yeah, we'll have a landscape architect come up.
Yeah, we'll get into, I'm sorry. We'll get into more detail about it.
The bus stop.
No, no. In fact, one of the things that happens, and we should have addressed on the plan already, was that in providing that landscaped strip along the curb line, somebody who's standing on the sidewalk and wants to use the bus has to walk across the landscaped area to get to the bus itself. So we can put in a concrete pad at that location so that nobody has to walk through the grassed area to accommodate, to get to the bus.
The fencing details. So is the metal picket going to be around the Asbury Avenue, on the First Avenue parking lot?
Yeah, so the metal picket is proposed in the areas that are along the right-of-way. So it's the more open fence style.
Right.
So along Asbury, in this section right here, and then along Langford, right in here, and then also along Langford, the main length of Langford and First, wherever it's adjacent to the road, we want the open-style fence, so that you can see inside. Yes, and then in the other locations where you want to screen maybe the adjoining use, or I'm not sure which way we're screening it, by the way, because this is a commercial use here, but the board-on-board fence is more of a visual screen along the other property lines. They're like a bronze aluminum to complement what's on the building.
Are we going to get samples and be able to see what they actually look like?
Defenseing, do we have that on our plans?
Wandering or something?
Something. No, we can bring them in.
We can bring them next time.
So on the southwest corner of First and Langford, is it six-foot fence? Is it six-foot fence being on the corner? Best during perfect. No, so six-feet fence can't be on the corners.
So is it six-foot height? Is it, I don't know if I saw that identified anywhere. So is there a maximum height along either right-of-way?
Four feet.
Four feet? Okay, so what we'll do is, well, we prefer to have the six-foot fence.
For safety, I'm sure.
For safety purposes. So we're requesting a design exception for the six-foot fence.
Drawout for something.
You have a lot of employees that are coming out each morning, each evening, and crossing the street from mid-block.
Correct.
Are we, any considered crosswalk, mid-block crosswalk, or anything inside that? Or is there lighting there at least?
Yeah, it's actually, Langford is a pretty low-traffic-volume street. There's a light pole right here, right at the northwest property line is a Cobra fixture, an existing Cobra fixture, that would light up this entire area right here. And that will be, there'll be further testimony on that from the landscape architect, but there's a light fixture right there.
But for safety purposes, if they wanted to cross at a crosswalk, you have it at Langford and Asbury Avenue, am I correct?
Yeah, there's a crosswalk at this location. That's correct, down at the intersection.
So just to confirm, what you're proposing now is you have six feet on the streets?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, does anybody else from the board have any other questions of the witness? No, about professionals? Okay, let's.
I just had a couple. Yeah. I don't know how we're doing on time, but we're, could we go through the engineering letter?
I'm going to go through both reports.
Okay.
Could I just ask a couple of questions and try to get some clarity before we get into the details?
Sure.
One of the things that, and I don't think it was articulated clearly on our report, was that on a corner lot, which both of these are corner lots, parking lots have to be behind the building line, or they have to follow a setback. But on the frontages, there's no setback requirement for the parking, but on the two other lot lines, there are setback requirements.
Correct.
So I want to make sure we understand that.
So just so that we're clear on that. So that would mean that on the Asbury Avenue parcel, this location here on Langford, which is the other right-of-way line, needs a 10-foot setback for parking.
That's not the way I read it, but, no, the way I read it is that when you have two front yards, it's required on the rear and the side.
All right, so we have two front yards?
You have two front yards, so you do not have a setback there for the parking.
Oh.
It's only required to be behind the building line.
Okay.
So because your building's at the setback, you have no setback.
Okay, fine.
The parking lot can be there.
So then I withdraw my request for that way.
But your other lot lines, you will require a 10-foot setback.
Okay, so that would be on the other side.
So on the north property line and on the east property line, you would require a 10-foot setback.
Correct.
All right, that's where the design exception is.
Yeah, that's right.
That's correct, and similarly, it's the opposite condition over on the other side.
Right, because we don't have a building.
You don't have a building, so you do have a setback.
So we do have the setback.
But you also have the setbacks on the other two sides.
Correct. Okay.
I believe that's the way it is.
I think that's correct.
Not having a building confuses everything. And just in terms of, you talked about screening of the parking lot, some vegetative screening.
We'll have some landscape testimony, but.
And from a site standpoint, you have pole-mounted lights in the parking lot. How are those going to be protected from vehicles?
They'll be on concrete basis, the ones that are in the parking lot?
So they'll actually be in the space. They'll be straddling the line between the spaces.
Yes, at the very end of the space.
But they technically will be in the space.
Yes, the very end of the space.
Now, keep in mind, they're measured at 16 feet, a max of 14 feet. We're going to provide testimony that we'd like to keep them because you don't have to have them in.
I was talking about the height.
I wasn't talking about the height.
No, I'm just talking.
I was just talking about the fact that you might crash into them.
Okay. And they're less to crash into.
The, in terms of vehicles, are there any specialized vehicles or any other type of vehicles that the company uses that might be parked?
No.
Cars?
We have a combination of passenger cars, a couple of pickup trucks, maybe a van or two, but standard-sized vehicles, that's what the question is.
Yeah.
Nothing specialized.
And no other equipment, you know, nothing you would bring out to a site to do?
No, well, anything that.
Kid veil testing or whatever.
Well, anything that we bring out to the site would probably come into the building during the night, at night, and then just be used, you know, and loaded into a vehicle as needed on a daily basis.
Okay, thanks.
Will there be other testimony about the pervious surfaces? Because I know we touched on those, but we'll.
No, do you have a question about impervious?
Well, you know, we're a big fan of increasing impervious surfaces, I mean pervious surfaces. And so I'm not quite sure how much, how much are we going to have and what are the percentages that we're supposed to have versus what you have?
Why don't we review that?
Can you go through that again, please?
Sure. So on the Asbury Avenue site, it's currently 100% impervious, and the maximum allowed is 80%.
And we're reducing the existing, am I correct?
Correct. And we're reducing the 100% down to 96.8%. Yeah, just want to make sure I have the number right. Yeah, 96.8%.
To impervious.
Correct. So there's a slight reduction in the impervious. So there's a slight increase in pervious.
Okay.
And that's used for landscaping on the site. And then similarly, on the First Avenue site, we actually have a greater reduction in impervious surface. That's allowed to be at 90% based on the zoning, and the existing is at 90.2%. And when we're done, the proposed is at 75.3%. So that's about a 15% reduction in impervious on the First Avenue site.
So when you look at the two sites combined, there is a significant benefit in terms of the increase in the pervious surface?
Yes.
And what's the requirement for the Asbury side? Because I know you said that right now it's 100%.
Yeah, the maximum permitted is 80.
80%.
80%. Can we do anything on the Asbury side to, on the Asbury?
It's tough.
Park to do that?
It's really tough. You know, it's, you have an existing building, and like unfortunately, a lot of the projects, your parking drives a lot of what you're trying to accomplish and to meet the requirements.
On the north side of the site, adjacent to those two spaces, that hashed area, is that just painted, or is that something that could maybe be landscaped?
That's currently just painted.
We can take a look at that.
We can take a look at putting some landscaping in that area right here.
Can I ask a question about the fencing? Just want to be clear. You talked about the one-foot offset, where it wasn't clear on the plans, but you.
Well, actually, we had it proposed on the right-of-way line, but we saw the comment, and then the county got the same comment, so we'll move it back.
So that's on the right-of-way line, but the other property lines as well?
The other property lines, I think it's offset a half a foot on the other property lines.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether you're talking about just the right-of-way or the property lines.
The R O W.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a, like along the Easterly property line here, there's a curb line just inside, and the fence is set right along that curb line. So the fence itself is just inside our property line. We didn't put the fence on the property line, the adjacent.
It won't comply with one foot?
No. It doesn't have to comply with the one foot on the sidelines. I thought it was just the right-of-way lines.
Is it both?
I believe it's both.
I'll double-check on that. I thought it was.
Double-check.
Yeah, let's double-check. I thought it was just the right-of-way lines that required the setback.
So that's not going to be mounted to the curb? The curb's going to be separate from the fence. It's just a little defense post, and they'll be installed in the floor. You're going to cordill it to your curb?
Well, no, we're not going to cordill it. We'll probably, we'll probably put the post in before we pour the curb. Yeah, so it's all in a straight line.
I have another question. On the Asbury Avenue side of the parking lot, they have two little aisles on each side of the.
Entry.
Is that any landscaped area?
That is landscaped already, yeah. Yeah, and we'll have.
If it's rendered by the.
That's okay. We'll have a colored rendering when the landscape architect testifies. It'll become a lot more obvious.
Okay, great.
Anybody else until?
When I, so when I think of engineering companies, I think of paper. If you get like a delivery from like an SU-30-type vehicle, can it traverse the site? Or do you mind showing an exhibit that it can make it through the site?
We'll put an exhibit together for you.
Okay.
Driving template.
Yep, driving template, so we can see what the maximum-sized vehicle is that can access the site.
Okay. Go through the.
Yeah, what I want to do is.
Unless you have something else.
The letter covers it all.
Okay. All right, what I'm going to do is first go through the planning report before I get to the engineering. There are a number of comments in there. I think the board's going to want to identify this report. All right, Daphne, I'm going to take you right to page 12 of this report, where it addresses in comment six at the bottom, fencing. Here's a comment about the detail should be revised to indicate how the fence panels are mounted and secured. Any issue with that?
No, we'll provide that detailing.
Okay.
Just to confirm, it is just the right-of-way?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. The comment also asks for a detail for the board-on-board fence. It doesn't indicate the use of posts for mounting. We'll add that to the plans also.
Yes.
And additionally, the last comment is with regard to fence type, there's a comment looking for the details with regard to the finish of the fencing.
Yes, we provide that.
For both sides, am I correct?
Yes.
All right. I think in terms of engineering. Yeah, that's all I have for engineering and the planning report. Okay. What I'm going to do then is go to the engineering report, and this report from Inside is dated March 24, 2022. I just want to note, the B1 report from CCH is dated April 15, 2022. So I guess Inside's report would be B2, again dated March 24, 2022. You've had the opportunity to review what now has been marked as B2 for identification, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, what I'm going to do is go through this report in more detail with you. Going to page two of this report, Site Plan Completeness Review. The first comment, number one, all existing vegetation within 200 feet, the site has not been provided. We're requesting waiver with regard to that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Number two, with dimensions for existing proposed sidewalk, all frontal frontages have not been provided. You're okay with providing that to the plans, am I correct?
We will add that to the plans, yes.
Number three, there's certain information that's being requested for the plans, manholes, sewer lines, fire hydrants, water lines, and additional items. There's a comment that there's no issue with limiting this information to the direct frontages of the property. That'll be done?
Yes.
Okay, and waiver with regard to the remaining beyond that, am I correct?
Yes.
Number four, requests with regard to all existing structures within 550 feet have not been provided. We're requesting a waiver with regard to that?
Correct.
Number five, existing proposed easements are not provided in the plans. Testimony with regard to any proposed easements. That would be the R O W. We would have to get approval for that from the mayor and council, am I correct?
Correct.
All right. And we would do that upon approval if this application is approved, am I correct?
Yes.
For those encroachments. Number six, refuse, storage or refuse. I'm going to have, when Ms. Galvin is done testifying, Mr. Giuliano would come back up to go through the garbage of the refuse. Now that's going to be collected. Number seven, with regard to centerlines being provided, waiver is being requested with regard to that, am I correct?
Yes.
Similarly, with regard to number eight, soil logs, another waiver, am I correct?
Yes.
Phasing. There is no phasing in essence for this project, am I correct? They're going to be constructed simultaneously?
Correct.
All right. Operations, that again, I'll have Mr. Giuliano come back and testify with regard to that. All right. Eleven, again, we've gone through that. Any R O W encroachments will have to be approved by the mayor and council. All right. Twelve, thirteen will be covered by our architect. Testimony with regard to number fourteen on page four, testimony with regard to the parking space to ensure they're usable and safely and conveniently arranged, and pedestrian circulation between the two properties. We have covered that?
Yes.
With regard to maintenance, number fifteen, maintenance of the landscaping, and that'll be by a professional landscaper, am I correct?
Yes. And we'll add a note on the plans.
Very good. Number sixteen will be covered by our landscape architect. Seventeen, just deferring to the board plan or tree commission for a review. Existing proposed trees, again, will have testimony from our landscape architect. Proposed lighting design, we'll have testimony from both our landscape architect and our architect on that.
Yes.
Utility connections, number nineteen. All right, we'll have, Daphne already touched upon that, that will be upgrading certain utility connections. We'll also have testimony from our architect with regard to that.
No issue showing those connections on the plan?
No, we'll show the new connections on the plan.
Okay. Refuse, again, will be covered by Mr. Giuliano. As well, twenty-one, recyclables. Twenty-two will be our landscape architect. Stormwater control, we've covered that? Stormwater, number twenty-three?
Yeah, I think we've, I've covered all of them in direct.
Okay.
Doug, do you have any other questions, or are you satisfied?
We talked about the existing roof-leader connections. Will you provide details on how they're going to be replaced, what they're going to be replaced with?
Sure, yes.
All right, twenty-four is asking for test, test match to a long-term instrument, given the applicant the right to utilize the Austrian parking. Both properties are owned by the same entity. Since it is accessory, 1,000, First Avenue be accessory to 929, the resolution, in a sense, would cover that because you couldn't use the parking lot for any other reason, seeing it's an accessory to a principal use. Irrespective of that, we can do a deed restriction on the deeds to ensure that the two are going to be utilized together, the two properties. The resolution in a sense would cover that because you couldn't use the parking lot for any other reason, seeing it's an accessory to a principal use. Irrespective of that, we can do a deed restriction on the deeds to ensure that the two are going to be utilized together, the two properties.
Yeah, you're going to need to do a deed indicating that the two properties are.
Yeah, no issue with that.
Linked. Because otherwise, if you don't do that, they could be sold separately and nobody's nobody's going to pick it up.
Not a problem with that. We've gone through twenty five. Twenty six, and second allow for Austrian parking be setback, we've gone through that. Tandem, we've gone through. Twenty six, we've accomplished. Twenty seven is a tandem parking. We've gone through that testimony. Twenty eight, site distances for the two way driveway providing access to Asbury Avenue, ask them to be added to the plans. Any issue with that?
Well, the county already approved it, so the county didn't see the need to have to add a site triangle there. I guess based on the configuration there with the wide sidewalk, they didn't feel the need to have to identify the site triangle.
Can you add it for the the city rights of way?
I think it does exist. In fact, I can see it. It does exist for Langford and along First. The site triangles are shown. Here's the one. Here's the one up for the driveway first.
So the only one that's missing is the Asbury Ave., but that's.
Yeah, because the county didn't.
Okay.
All right. Twenty nine, note that an exception is required to allow for the one way driveway, providing access to Langford to be zero feet, point five feet off the property line where five feet is required. We've already addressed that.
Yeah, we'll add the ask for dimension be added. We'll add the dimension.
Exception to allow a two way driveway, provide an access for a staff to be twenty three feet where fifty feet is required. We provide a test one with regard to that. Again, planting on thirty one, an exception is being requested. We've gone through that.
All of these, thirty one through thirty six are all.
These are all landscaping. All right, I'll have the landscape architect touch upon that. Loading space, we're not providing a loading space, but we've gone through the test one with regard to the U P S and FedEx and will provide more information with regard to. Any other additional vehicles. Sign related exceptions, we'll have the architect go through all the signage and also with the good neighbor provision with regards to the sides of the signs, we'll have the architect go through that. The one foot setback, number forty, we are complying with. We're doing that one foot off the right of way.
Yeah, so that's no longer an exception.
That's correct. All right, ADA number forty one. All right.
Sure, so I'll go through that real quick. The ADA parking spaces are immediately adjacent to the main building entrance and they are graded as required. Once you come into the building, there's actually a ramp within the building. That's the existing configuration of the building. The architect will talk about that more, but there's actually a ramp inside the building. That's just the way it's set up.
Number forty two, note with regard obtaining approval from the Monmouth County Planning Board, that already has been obtained conditional approval, am I correct?
Correct.
Forty three, the four inch high curb as opposed to six inches, we've already addressed that, am I correct?
Yes.
The height point with regard to runoff in the parking lot, number forty four.
Yeah, I assume that's relative to the First Avenue site, right? We'll clarify that.
All right.
Is that right?
Yes.
Number forty five, the comment is it appears great, steep within seven percent. Our proposed within the parking area should be reduced below five percent if feasible. Is that feasible?
No, because we'd have to rip out the whole parking lot to do that. So I had previously mentioned that I felt that seven percent was acceptable in the parking lot. It's an existing condition and we propose to leave it like that.
Can you just describe what part of the pavement you're looking to maintain?
Sure.
That's causing the issue?
Yeah, how do I do? I've got to zoom in on this, right? Hold on a second. So here's the First Avenue lot. The portion of the pavement is right in here, right in front of the where the existing building was. So between the the limits of the existing building, which is right here, and then over to the proposed limited parking lot, we're trying to salvage this swath in here. So that we don't have to rip it all out.
No, you go ahead.
It it feels like you're you're doing backflips to try to save some pavement when you could, that might be too steep and for parking. When you're making this whole site for your world, you're making it new, you have planting, you have fencing, you have all this new stuff and. I think seven, I think seven percent is excessive. I think it, you know, car doors will slam into people's legs and things like that when you cross those.
We will review it.
We'll take a look at it.
Take a look at it.
We're on the spot grades, number forty six. No issue with that?
No, no issue.
Okay. Forty seven talks about the monitoring wells that are existing on the survey.
Yes, there is an L S R P assigned to the project and we will provide documentation to respond to these comments.
Okay, we'll submit the documentation to the board prior to the next meeting. The number forty eight is asking for test one with regard to the impact, the existing bus stop. Any impact to the bus stop?
No, I think we spoke about that already, that we're going to propose a landscape strip in there, but we'll add the comfy pad to accommodate the bus stop location.
You had said that the actual driveway itself was getting smaller, correct?
Yeah, the driveway at Asbury Avenue is being narrowed down a little bit. So the new driveway falls within the existing driveway.
Number forty nine, I'll have Mr. Giuliano come up with regard to the operations on the site, the number in place, I believe he already testified to, and the hours of operation, which would essentially be normal business hours. With regard to fifty, it does not include structural review. That'll be done before the building department. Sewer connection fees, no issue with regard to that. And emergency vehicles fifty two, I believe we've already addressed. And I believe that's all the comments in B two.
Any other questions from the from the board? More professionals?
If a bus shelter is installed in there, will that affect your layout at all? The city is looking at installing bus shelters out of this stop.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it would affect the layout. I don't know the exact dimensions of the bus shelter, but I don't think I don't think it would affect the layout. It's pretty, it's a wide sidewalk there, so.
Couple of questions.
Go ahead.
The Asbury Avenue side, any encroachments into that side?
Into the right of way?
Yes.
Yes, similar situation. The building is right on the right of way line. In fact, there's already like a one inch encroachment for the existing building. So the facade treatment, including the signage, further encroaches. So we've already discussed that with the county, so we need to do whatever paperwork we need with the county.
So there'll be an easement or something.
An easement or franchise, whatever they call. I don't know what the county calls it.
Did the county require any right of way dedications or?
No.
I think you talked about the site triangle. You said you already received the review from the county?
Yeah, we have conditional approval from the county.
Doug, have you seen that?
I have not.
Oh, you know what? I have a copy of it. Do you want to give them a copy?
Yes.
Arina, was it submitted to the city yet?
We'll submit that also.
Yeah, we'll submit this. I don't want to just hand it over formally.
I'm sorry, there's just a letter. We didn't receive the their their letter approval or.
We'll send it over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from our professionals or board members? No? Okay, then anybody from the public that would like to, this is your time? No? Really? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Right, right. All right, I think that given the given the time, I'm not thinking that bringing someone else new to the mic would be.
Why don't we do this? We have ten minutes. I'm thinking maybe just call Mr. Giuliano up to go through the refuses and the operations.
Absolutely.
This way he can finish with his testimonials.
We don't have any. With respect to the refuses, I talked to the office manager and the cleaning service today. And what they what they determined, they come twice a week. They said what they do is they produce, we produce about fourteen black plastic bags, typical sized plastic bags. That go into like round industrial type drums that get rolled out to the back and presently the building owner where we are, we only have a third of the building. They supply receptacles for both recycling and trash. So that's what we're generating now, plus the cart. So what we would intend to do, one is we we hope to have less normal refus because I think right now there's no place to go out to lunch on an industrial way. A lot of people can't wait to get here to walk down the street or walk across the street. So we're going to generate probably less of trash trash. What we would do is we have a we have a roll up garage type door in this area right here that we're going to maintain. So we can roll things in and out and little tiny equipment that we use and that's where we'll keep the trash and recycling.
Will be kept inside.
Inside the building. We don't want a dumpster. We don't want anything on the outside. And however times, probably twice a week, we'll have a service.
Private holder.
Private holder come through, roll out the cans, we'll pick them up, dump them. If we have to, we'll take the recycling to recycling center ourselves. We have somebody who can do that. So it'll be stored in the building and it's not much. And what you said earlier about paper. So the only group in our office who produces paper is Daphne's little group. Our, the rest of our operation is not a typical engineering and people get confused by this and when I joined the company, I was confused. Our entire operation is PDF. We don't see clients. Like our clients might be in Chicago, the entire fifth floor of the Wells Fargo building. And that's those, that's the type of clients we have. Gigantic REITs, insurance companies, HUD. So we don't see clients. They don't come to the office. And everything is posted on websites through a portal and that's how all of our information for assessments, construction, project management is all done via the web. We have very sophisticated. Computer software for that. We're not really produce, bringing in people.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. That that area, where were you pointing before with the refuses?
So up there in the north corner, northeast corner, there's a there's a garage door there and we're going to maintain that and construct walls around it, of course, interior. So that will that that'll be an automatic roll up door.
Wasn't that also a parking space?
No, there's, I don't think there's true parking spaces.
There is a walkway, but I don't know how wide it is.
Yeah, we'll have the architect testify as to how that will operate, but that's where it's going to be kept.
So what's in that little kick above the drive onto Langford, that yeah, that square?
That, that's a building we tried to buy. It's just like a little, somebody owns.
That's your Jason property.
We tried to buy it. It's a little storage building, like a little out parcel between our two pieces there. I think there was one other, there was one other question. Oh, hours of operation. So we barely run one shift. And I say that because yes, we're open like eight, eight to five. But everyone, everybody, everyone, whether your administration, office management, executives, everybody has a laptop. Our VPN through the pandemic panned out to be perfectly operational. We have two server operations, east coast and west coast. So anybody can work from home. We're very flexible. We seldom see people five days a week. We almost never see people five days a week. Sometimes they come in a little later, has not affected production. So we, you wouldn't see anybody there on the weekend or or at night, really, maybe to clean your surface.
That's the way the we're all, we're all there's changer in the pandemic.
And it's working really well.
I think people love it.
And the fencing that's good, that's going to be on the in the driveways and the parking areas, is that just by some sort of a fob or how does it get locked every night? I'm assuming it gets locked.
It probably will be locked every night. We will have some vehicles left in the parking lot unless people take them home to go out the next day. The other parking lot, I don't, we haven't planned anything automatic at this point, but it'll it'll be sliding gates or we'll close them at night. Maybe they won't be closed every night. Depends on, you know, the last one out, close the door. But all, anything into the building is all automated. We all have fobs, you know, to get in and out of the building.
Okay, so so it may or may not be locked and that's 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 on you guys.
We intend to lock. But it may or may not be locked. Because we don't want someone to come in early the next day. Because sometimes accessories will come in early to pick up vehicle and go out and, you know. We don't want to have to get everybody a key. So we'll we'll have to figure that out. Maybe electric.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Open to the public?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Any public?
Got to do it.
All right.
All right. All right, Arina, what's the next, what's the next opening? Okay.
And we can do that without notice, am I correct? And we'll waive any modifications.
All right, and what do we need a date as to when all the information has to get back to our professionals so that we can get the reports out?
So we we discuss the everything we created after.
Three weeks ahead of the meeting. Okay.
Just hold on.
All right, take a moment. Okay, let's see. I think there's a little discussion.
I have an issue with my planner being available on the twenty seventh.
We could go.
Is there anything we can do earlier? Nothing?
No, these are, we're backed up. That's that's why. Right, Arina, or we don't have a day? We just filled the, we just filled the sixth. We can move it to the next meeting after that. It's not a problem.
No, we can't. We're up against a lease. We need to get it started. We can't really push it.
You have a special.
Yeah, you can have a special. You can request a special meeting if you like.
You can?
You can. You'll, I mean, it'll cost you a little bit more, but you can.
We can.
Yeah.
That's what I tell people. It will cost us, but we can.
You can.
Yeah, there's.
It's up to you guys.
Not much of any revisions that have to be made, just some notes on the plans. So as soon as we can get a special hearing, that'd be great.
All right, if you'd if if you'd like that, then Arina will poll the board and the professionals to find out what date it would be available. Sure.
I need to say that let's keep on the June.
Just in the event we can't get a date.
Associates and the costs associated with it. But we're we're deep into this. I think we're, we'd love to have a special.
Let's keep, let's do this. Let's put it on for the twenty seventh.
Okay.
If we're going to have a special hearing, I will renotice that special.
Right, you'd have to renotice if we're going to have a special.
Let's do it that way.
That's fair.
Yes, if for some reason we can't have the special hearing, at least we have that date set.
All right, so then, Arina will will poll the all, poll, poll all of us and find out when we can, and then the relevance of that would would have to be at least three weeks, three, four weeks out from today. Right? Because they need some time to do what they need to do.
Yeah, it's minimal from what I understand from board professionals.
Well, let me say this. I think that if if there's an interest in solving all those issues before a special meeting, then reach out and let's solve those issues, right? That can be done. It's a matter of.
Sure.
Having a conversation and agreeing how it's going to be solved.
Okay, so then, let's just take a, just a quick look here. So then, so then, Arina, are we looking, so what, when are we even starting to look? Are we, are we, so we're looking for some other date in June? As early in June as possible?
If we can get towards.
Or the very end of May?
Yeah.
Okay, so so, Arina, we'll have to start with like, let's say, the third week of of May or something like that and then see if we, or look back to see what we can do.
If we want to hold, we want to hold.
Yeah, that's why we will. We will.
Thank you very much for even considering a special meeting.
As long as people are available, we can do it. It's just a matter of that everybody agrees on the date. Well, let's let's see if how he, how how people are available, what their availability, availability is. Okay?
I'm not available on the twenty third.
Okay, well, so there goes that.
But you don't have any comments.
Yeah, we'll just do a poll. Yep.
All right, so you'll provide us with the debate. Okay.
Carry to the.
Carry to the twenty seventh of June.
Without notice. I second it. You're welcome.
Mayor John Warren?
Yeah.
Yes.
James Banana?
Yes.
Daniel Tanameo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara.
Yes. Okay, and yeah, go ahead. Go, go, Rick. Okay, and, um, can I get, yeah, go ahead. Go, go, Rick.
Bootrager.
I second. Thank you.